All right, welcome. Ben Vanoy, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, we can hear you. Thank you for that clarification. For those that are on the Zoom meeting, welcome this afternoon noon to our Board of Commissioners meeting. And as we always have, and hopefully in the future continue to do, we look for the audience, looks to the audience to see if anybody would like to participate with us in the first part of our meeting, which is doing a prayer, a reading, or a thought. And the second is leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Are there anybody in the audience who'd like to lead us in a prayer, reading, or thought? Or pledge? Usually the pledge goes quick. No one? Okay, we'll bring it up here to the bench then. Commissioners, any preferences? We're always the default.
I have no preference. Oh, do you have a preference?
Oh, for the prayer.
Okay, then I'll do the pledge.
All right.
Our Father in the heavens, we are grateful to be able to meet as a community, as a county, as cities, and friends, and neighbors, and grateful for the opportunity to participate in our country, in our government, and grateful to thee for the representations that we are able to provide to our community. And I'm grateful now to meet at this time in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you for that. All right, we'll, we'll look to our agenda. First off, on our agenda is a recognition. This is put on by Commissioner Gardner's office.
Yeah, I received an email on Friday at 3:45 PM. I think it's funny, they always send things at the end of the day on Friday. And that email was from the National Association of Counties. And it was recognizing a project that our IT staff and our marriage license staff have been working on for two years. And it recognizes them for exemplary service. This has been a huge project. I know through the coronavirus pandemic, our assessor's office closed to the public at times, our recorder's office closed to the public at times, the treasurer's office closed to the public at times, all of the offices closed to the public at times, but the marriage license office never did. And that was a big deal because we were the only office in the state, and one of the only offices in the nation that didn't stop issuing marriage licenses. And so I wanted to recognize the crew that made that happen. I think these guys really, through the coronavirus pandemic, were frontline workers who made sure that government didn't get in the way of people's lives. And as much as we talk about the proper role of government, sometimes the proper role of government is to get out of the way of the people. And I think that our IT division, their programmers, and the marriage license division did an absolutely fantastic job of ensuring that government did not become an undue burden on the lives of individuals. So I think it was a great recognition from the National Association of Counties. As far back as I can see, I don't think that Utah County has ever received recognition like this from the National Association of Counties. So I was pretty excited for them. And so I asked the, the programming team and Patrick to come and be recognized as well as the key players in the marriage license division. So I think Josh has something prepared that he wanted to, to recognize them for. And, and with that said, I know Josh may say this, but I can't tell you how many times I've been asked, what company built this for you? And when I tell people that it was our in-house information systems department, they are floored. We truly have an amazing in-house information systems division.
Yeah, I think we should invite up the company that built it. Come on up, Patrick, Jerry, Mike, Kendra.
And our programmers, come on.
And our other team members who helped design and vision it, Bert, Russ, Carolina.
Yeah.
Everybody who played a role, come on up here.
I think sometimes with them sitting in other buildings or down in the basement, we don't get the recognition, but really, truly, a world-class team that you guys built this.
Yeah, I'll just read briefly from the NACO Award announcement. NACO, the National Association of Counties, recognized Utah County's online marriage license system and web conference weddings in the category of information technology. This program allowed for residents to safely receive their marriage licenses online using blockchain technology in midst of the global pandemic, as well as provide a way for people to get married safely when many venues, government buildings, churches, et cetera, were shut down due to safety protocols. NACO President Gary Moore said, "Over the past year, county officials and frontline employees have demonstrated bold, inspirational leadership. This year's achievement award, winning programs, illustrate the innovative ways counties build healthy, safe, and vibrant communities across America. Nationally, awards are given in 18 different categories that reflect the vast comprehensive services counties provide. Categories include children and youth, criminal justice, public safety, county administration, information technology, health, civic engagement, and many more." So this program, something that's, that's interesting to note, you know, in 2019, we first decided we've got to streamline the process of issuing marriage licenses. It's somewhat labor-intensive. Couples, you know, have to take time off of work or school. They have to come into the office typically between those business hours of eight to five. They were filling out paper applications. It would take 25 to 30 minutes per couple to basically complete the entire process of marriage licensing. So we said, yes, something's got to change. And IT partnered with us and was able to develop a program that was launched and ready to go in January of 2020. And the process was rolled out in phases, but the entire process to both, both to apply for, receive, and complete after a completed marriage is now totally online. And that process was available by March of 2020. So just to our, maybe our luck, although it wasn't so lucky, this global pandemic hit our community and many different kinds of offices, including elements of county government, were essentially shut down. And there were couples and families in the community who desperately wanted to get married. They had plans to get married. They didn't want to delay their marriage. And what we saw were people from really all over the state coming to Utah County to get their marriage license completely online. And, you know, there are so many great stories I could share. I won't because some, you know, protect some people's privacy, but very notable, well-known individuals in our community were able to use the system and, and get married when they thought that that wasn't going to be possible. So it's really just a remarkable achievement. It's the first system of its kind, really, in the world where you can basically complete the entire process of marriage licensing online. And it's a huge credit to the ingenuity and innovation of our IT team and, and the service of our public services team that issues marriage licenses and passports. So let's just give them another round of applause. Patrick, Patrick, you have anything to say from IT?
I, I don't really want to say too much because you did a great job. You can tell from looking behind me that the programmers involved all love all the extra attention. They could not wait to come upstairs to be possibly brought up to the podium. So I appreciate that, Josh.
We're going to hear from every single one of them, right?
No, honestly.
You can always text it or type it.
Yeah, you can text it to us. That's fine.
Exactly. Honestly, we, we're just grateful that we were given an opportunity to really stretch our creative muscles. Not always we get a project as exciting that, of potential as this one offered. There is a huge need that Josh identified, and we were able to, sometimes creative innovation comes from discovering new things and how to use them. In our case, it was a combination of discovering new things, but also picking other innovative solutions and putting them together in, in a way that's never been put together before. And so we're just grateful for, sorry about that, we're just grateful for the opportunity to get that kind of a, a project and bring more on. We love it.
I want to point out two things. Number one, the fact that you feel marriage licenses as exciting is fantastic.
Yeah.
But number two, I, you know, we talk a lot about wanting to send things out to the private sector and how we think that things can be done more efficiently. And the interesting thing about this is we actually bid out having an outside entity develop this system. And it was actually cheaper and faster to have our IT department do it. So we did get external bids on creating the system that was in the minds of, of Bert Harvey. You know, Bert had a system in his mind. Josh added to that idea. And Josh and Bert created this, this map, if you will, on what the system should look like. And we actually received bids on that. And it was more money to have the outside companies develop it. And it wouldn't have been done in time for a global pandemic. So I want to commend you for being efficient and effective in the work that you do.
Right. Thank you very much.
Fantastic. I wonder if, Patrick, on my mouse, I have to flip it around backwards to get it to go the right and left the right way. You ever seen that before?
Yeah. If you've got to switch to a left hand, it'll probably do that to you.
No, I say that because that was an April Fool's joke that we played when I was working in the Senator's office. And we've, they, I couldn't do it. It took somebody with IT experience. They flipped it around and flipped the screen upside down, too. And they came in there like, what in the world is going on?
Yeah, that's why I should note, I, I've been lucky enough to have the opportunity to serve as a bishop in the community for the last few years. And so I've actually been on multiple ends of this, overseeing it, and then being sort of lead couples through the process. And then I had to officiate a few marriages last spring. So I really saw this from every, every angle. And I can tell you.
All of a sudden, your efficiency makes sense.
Well, you know, I think we also discovered ways we can make some things better by, by going through the process. But it was, I have to tell you, there's not a lot of hyperbole about the services we're able to provide at a time where no one else could provide it. I mean, I literally had couples in my office saying, but how do I get married now? And so I was pleased that we actually did something that had meaning outside of our own. Sometimes we do stuff and it's meaningful to us because we know it's like nuts and bolts parts of county government services. This is something that I think everyone can kind of see from the outside. And it's nice to have that kind of recognition. We appreciate it.
Well, thank you for the amazing work you did, Patrick.
One footnote that has to be said is that we had this system running for a couple of weeks, and the state of New York followed suit and copied our lead.
Right.
Wait, you didn't copyright it?
Well, we actually got a call from Governor Cuomo's office, and they said, how are you doing this? They wanted to know which vendor, they wanted to know which vendor we used so they could hire them.
Spent a lot of time with you guys. Thank you for doing that. I spent months with you. So thanks, Bert. You were the face of this whole thing a year ago.
Absolutely.
Thanks so much.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Wait, you're not staying? Darn it. Okay. Let's go on to our second one. We've got three ones on this agenda. So we've got the second one is a public hearing. And this public hearing is conduct a public hearing to discuss and amend the 2021 budgets in the Utah County's general fund and other budgetary funds, and to consider revisions to the county's estimated estimations of, of revenue. And so if we can get a motion to, to open up a public hearing.
I'll make that motion then.
A second?
Got a motion and a second to open up that public hearing? All in favor, say aye.
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 We are now open in a public hearing. So we'll first look here in the, in the audience, those that are here. And then we'll look on Zoom if there's others that are, any in the, in any of the audience. Seeing, oh, I do have one. Come on up. It's Dale, right?
Right. There's a good memory. I'm Dale Summerhays from the Santaquin Payson area, representing individual homeowners in that area. And I'm here to extend our support for your efforts to revise your budget and let you know that we appreciate it very much as taxpayers in that area. And also your efforts to reduce property taxes overall. I know this is an initial step, Commissioner Lee mentioned, and there's more to come, and we appreciate that. The 2020 tax increases were dramatic to say the least. And the reduction in budget requirements is badly needed. But we have even a greater crisis coming in 2021. Home market values right now are climbing, climbing at unprecedented rates. And the real estate market in Utah is an uncharted territory. We've never been here before. Real estate agents are staggering. They don't know what to make of the giant increases in property tax, in property values that are taking place right now. And if the current tax formulas in Utah County are not capped in some manner, the tax increases that are coming this year will be astounding to all and devastating to many. Much more work needs to be done concerning property tax reform. But we want to thank you at this time for taking these initial steps to reduce the Utah County budget requirements. So once again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dale.
Much more work needs to be done concerning property tax reform, but we want to thank you at this time for taking these initial steps to reduce the Utah County budget requirements. So once again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dale.
Josh Daniels, resident of Saratoga Springs. Dale's come a few times now and talked about this and I feel like it's important that the community understands how property taxes work. And I've heard a number of folks in the community talk about, you know, use the term formula. It talked about capping a formula, talked about property values, talked about the real estate market, talked about appreciation in property values. There's really a misconception, I think, in Utah, and it's understandable why. If you've ever lived in any other state in America, it's easy to believe and to assume that as your property value rises, that perhaps your, your, your property tax rate, much like your income tax rate, essentially stays the same such that you pay a lot more dollars each and every year if your property value goes up. What a lot of people probably don't realize is Utah's very unique. We are the only state in America that has a property tax law and a property tax system that actually requires rates to float down as property values increase. In 1985, the Utah Legislature passed a set of reforms collectively called truth in taxation. One of the things that truth in taxation does under state law is it requires the state tax commission to certify the tax rates that are adopted by local government. This is known as the certified rate. And each year, local government, cities and counties will adopt this certified rate. The reason that it's important that the rate is certified is that the state tax commission goes through a very complex calculation process to certify the fact that the jurisdiction is only going to collect the same nominal dollar amount of revenue that they collected the year before, plus any additional revenue related to new growth, new growth in valuation, new growth in properties. So for example, if you had a county that collected a million dollars in year one, and in year two, nothing changed, no new people moved in, no new properties were created, no new undeveloped land was developed, everything stayed precisely the same, then that county would, would actually collect only a million dollars. Even if every property in the community were to double in value, then that local county would only collect a million dollars in year two. And so this certified tax rate process, this truth in taxation process, in the political parlance, it's what's called a spending and expenditure limitation. California has something called Prop 13, which imposes, to Dale's point about caps, in California, Prop 13 proposes and imposes caps on how much more revenue could be collected by a jurisdiction year over year over year. And there's a formula for that. That's different than what Utah does. Utah doesn't actually get to increase its revenue. There is no, there's no requirement for a capping because you're actually capped at the exact same amount of revenue as the year before. There's a formula for growth that's complicated. But, but Prop 13 is an example of how state governments try to impose limitations on local government increases to property tax burdens. Colorado has something called the taxpayer bill of rights, Tabor. The way the Tabor rule works in Colorado is that the increases to property taxes are capped based on a formula of population and inflation, what they call populif- populflation. So all around the country, there are some states that have various kinds of systems in place designed to cap the amount that's captured by property tax. But Utah's unique in that we have probably the most severe capping mechanism. Now, what that requires then, going back to the truth in taxation element of this law, is that local governments actually have to have a public hearing process to propose to collect a dollar more revenue than the certified tax rate would produce in a year over year kind of scenario. So what that sets up for local government is local government actually has to intentionally decide how much of the inflation it would like to recapture when it collects more taxes in the next year. So you notice that many local governments and school districts will go through this truth in taxation process frequently, whether it's every year, every couple of years, every three to five years. I think you've noticed in our county, the school districts, Alpine-Neebo and the Provo City School District generally have conducted truth in taxation about every two to three years on average. The water district, Central Utah Water Conservancy District, a special service district of sorts that serves every single home in Utah County, they have conducted truth in taxation every single year. And what they do is they essentially take the same rate that they had the previous year and they seek to, to impose that exact same rate the following year. But that is characterized not as holding the line on taxes, but that's characterized as an increase under the truth in taxation and certified tax rate process. So in Utah County's case, it has not adopted an increased certified rate but once in that 30-year history since that law was imposed. And that was in the 2019, fall of 2019 for the 2020 budget year. That was the first year Utah County actually adopted what would be characterized under the law as an increase by conducting truth in taxation, proposing to then impose a rate that would be above the certified rate. That certified rate would have gone down. So if you actually look at the actual tax rate for properties in Utah, in Utah County, they've gone down dramatically since the 1980s, more dramatically than really any other county in the state because Utah County has not conducted that truth in taxation process really at all once, certainly not as frequently as other counties. So it's just really important, I think, for people in the public to understand how property taxes work. One thing to know is that as your property tax, as your property value goes up, certainly in this hot real estate market, Utah County will not be collecting more revenue from you because your property value went up. So barring some complicated math and a few exceptions to the rule, generally speaking, if in 2020, you paid, let's say, $200 in property taxes to Utah County, you're going to count on paying about $200 the next year in property taxes, even if your property value doubles. The exception to that rule is if your house is appreciating faster than the average house in Utah County, in which case you would pay a little bit more. But otherwise, generally speaking, the portion of property taxes that you pay to any entity ought to, barring one of those increases through truth in taxation, remain relatively stable. So if you look at your property tax bill and it's going up dramatically, it's because one of the local government entities that taxes you is actually imposing an increase, typically the school districts. If you look at that 30-year history, school districts in Utah County on average have raised taxes 300%. And so, so it's just really an important element of budgets and taxes that, that you got to understand. Utah's very unique and that's, that's a good thing.
Thank you.
So to summarize, property value goes up, property tax does not.
I'm trying not to make this a debate format, so I don't know if this is working anymore. Can you hear me out there? You can hear me?
I really appreciate your comments and that clarification. I just want to say that in reality, property taxes do go up. My property taxes went up 25% in the last two years. Okay, that's a fact.
Amount that you're paying?
The amount that I'm paying, 25% in two years. The reductions in rates are in no way making up for the increase in property value assessments. It's just not equalling out.
Property value assessment literally does not affect your tax rate.
What's that?
Yeah, let's-
Your assessment does not affect your tax rate.
Go ahead and-
Okay, well, the tax rate is based on the value of the house, right? And then, and then the rates are applied to that. But the reduction in rates are not making up for the increases. Like, I'm just saying, the fact is my, my taxes went up 25%, period. That's what, that's the result.
And you have one question. Did you visit your school district when they did truth in taxation?
Yes, I did. And truth in taxation, to me, is worthless. I've been to these meetings and I've, and I've been to these public meetings and I've listened to the comments from, from homeowners. And the boards have listened to them. After that, they go back in their room or whatever they do, they come back. There, I haven't been to one of them where the public opinion has made any difference to the budget. They go ahead and do what they were going to do before the meeting. And so it's basically, I hate to say it, it's just a dog and pony show because it doesn't affect what they do. They present their budget, they listen to the comments, and they go ahead with their budget with no revision of any kind. So if that's all it takes to increase a budget to whatever amount you want, there's no limitations on that, is to listen to public comments, that's pretty easy. And a lot of times it doesn't, most of the time, if any, make any difference to what they do. So I've got the statistics and I've got the figures for you to show you how these reductions in rates are not making up for the increase in taxes based on the assessment. It's just a fact. So I'm not saying that it's a bad system, but I'm saying there's some revisions that need to be made because the bottom line is taxes are going up dramatically. 25% in two years, really? So again, I appreciate, you know, the, the assessment of how, how things are done, but we need to take a look at the reality of what's happening. And I'm not the only one. And a lot of people are really, really struggling with these increases, especially those on fixed incomes. The increases are real, no matter how the formula is figured. And 25% is just not sustainable. People cannot sustain those kind of increases, especially those on fixed incomes. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Chris Poles in Utah County Assessor. And Dale, you're right. I've already had phone calls from taxing entities asking us how much we're going to be increasing values. The only reason I get that phone call is for one reason, and that is determine what are we going to do in truth in taxation, which has been stated, the state tax mission does level out and it is based on averages. So obviously, home values are going up faster than commercial values. In fact, in some areas, commercial values drop. So you'll even see a shift in how taxes work. This happens with centrally assessed properties as well. But there is an impact. They're calling me so that they can start analyzing their budgets to know how much they can increase because I've actually sat in these meetings like you have. I'm sitting in a truth in taxation meeting by another taxing entity, not Utah County, but some other taxing entity where the chair has actually stood up and said, we're here to decrease your taxes. So if you have a problem, go see the county assessor. This is in a truth in taxation meeting. The only time you hold a truth in taxation meeting is to increase taxes. And the entire room just left. And then they went ahead and raised taxes. So it is very confusing how this whole system works because it's not straightforward. There's a lot of variables involved. So I, I completely understand your frustration, Dale, because there's many times that I get phone calls based on bad information and people pointing to me because the state tax mission does neutralize your, your revenue based on increase in values or decreases. It works both ways. I know we haven't had the presentation yet. Typically, we make comments after the presentation, but I know that I went through the PowerPoint. In fact, before you took office, Mr. Sakovich, Commissioner Sakovich, we were actually in a, a meeting in my office where we pulled up your taxes. And the amount of money that you actually had to increase or pay to Utah County was not as much as what you had to pay to Nebo School District when they increased their rates last year. So that 25%, yeah, it's just not one entity, it's multiple entities that add up. Back to why we're here in this, this discussion. In the past, the general fund has had struggles and they didn't want to go through truth in taxation. So they got creative. And in, and in two years, they actually took levies out of the assessing, collecting, and moved them into the general fund under what's called other regular. I just want you to keep that in mind because right now, the ANC levy is not producing sufficient funding for the expenses associated with the different departments that rely on that levy. I'm not talking about the records office. We all know they have their separate fund. But I am talking about tax admin, treasurer, assessor. And we also have the other departments that get a percentage of the ANC levy. This, this levy called other regular that's in the general fund, one of the two levies, in 2020, because they haven't set up for 2021 yet, but in 2020, it produced six and a half million dollars for the general fund. This is a levy that originated in the ANC levy and was shifted over. So just keep that in mind that we are running to where we have to rely on reserves if we're using ANC funds to fund the services that we provide. And the legislature basically set this ANC levy up as a way to create a guaranteed levy or a guaranteed revenue to a service that actually benefits not Utah County, but actually a greater benefit to school districts because they're the ones that collect 60 or 70% of the distribution. So that was my comment is just keep that in the back of your minds as you decide what type of adjustments you want to make because it'd be appreciated if we could talk about how to return some of that levy that originated in the ANC levy.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments in the room? All right. Alice online? Anyone online? One, one comment I'm just going to make in a, in a general fashion, all taxing entities are not equal. There are different parameters that are going on. The Central Utah Water one was brought up, the property tax, that is their only revenue source. And so it's, it, you can't, it's, it's hard to look at them without saying that, I mean, that's their only source. And so there's no sales tax or anything like that that jumps in there. They didn't do any offsets.
Right.
Okay. I don't see any others. So can we close the public hearing?
I'll move to close public.
I'll second that motion.
Oh. Oh, you got one more? So I got a motion and a second, but if it's all right with the commissioners, we're going to allow one more to, to speak before we take action.
I just wanted to-
Oh, Peter Jepson. Okay.
Am I being heard? Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. I just wanted to let the commissioners know that I was in the meeting with Chris when they changed the amount going to the assessing and collecting. And I remember that all three commissioners said, Chris, we promise you that whenever you need it back, we'll give it back to you. And that was, I mean, I know Chris didn't say that, but I was there when that was, when that took place and that, that's what they said. Thank you.
I hope you have their numbers so they can fulfill that promise.
That's great information. Thank you, Peter. I appreciate that. I had not heard that before.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, we're out of the public meeting. We are now going to turn to our agenda. As you see on our agenda, we have a consent agenda item or a bold lettered, underlined there, but there's nothing underneath it. So we're going to be placing things on consent and we will do that by not holding it and leaving it on regular. And I'll try to clarify that as we go. So we will, we will go through our regular agenda, kind of in block sections and, and hold things to stay on regular. Everything else will go to consent. So let's start with items number one, one through 10. Commissioners, any items from one through 10?
I'd like to hold number five.
Number five? Whoops. It's a number five. Okay. And I'd like to hold number- And I'd like to hold number nine.
Nine.
Okay. Items, let's go eleven through twenty.
I'd like to hold number sixteen.
Sixteen, yep.
Is it fifteen?
Sixteen.
Sixteen?
Sixteen has to take action. So that's appropriate. Any others? Through twenty? Okay. Items twenty-one through twenty-five.
I would like to hold twenty-two, twenty-three, and...
Twenty-four.
And twenty, I think, did we need twenty-four held? And then twenty-five?
Twenty-four and twenty-five.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. And then I have for items number twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine, that we need items twenty-six, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine. Is there a need for twenty-seven? Anybody?
So we can strike twenty-seven.
So then if we could put it on, on, on consent, we won't hold it, we'll just leave it on consent to approve and set the date, time, and location as stated in number twenty-six, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine. And that will be following this meeting of this, after this meeting at this location. And then if it's all right, we will strike, leave it on consent to strike item twenty-seven. Read to? Okay, so I'm going to go back through it since Alice asked me to. So everything is going on to the consent agenda except for the items that I am, that we have already discussed, and I'm just reiterating. Number five, number nine, number sixteen, numbers twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five, and then the closed meetings will leave on consent. Oh, and striking twenty-seven, yes. Yeah. Okay. You do a better job of it, Alice, than I do, but... Okay, so with that, let's move to item number five. That one was held. Oh, that was Commissioner Sakovic.
Yeah. I was, I'd like to hold this because I wanted to propose that we continue Agenda Five because a resolution normally is an expression of will by a government or anybody, any particular body, on a principle, recognizing the principle that it supports, it gets behind, or a group or groups. Normally with governments, it's in recognition of constitutional principles. We hear about resolutions for different amendments in the Constitution that it supports specifically that particular time. And it also recognizes groups outside of the government body itself. And so what I'm thinking is that instead of a resolution, perhaps it should be some other commendation that we do for individuals in, in the times past. And that's why I'm thinking that a resolution is more a reinforcement of a, something else, of another principle or a policy that the county or governments have established previously or needing clarity. And so that's why I was thinking that's, a resolution is probably not the right route to go with this. So I sort of wanted to continue this maybe a week.
Yeah, I don't, I'm fine continuing it. I would, I mean, I would love to discuss that. I think that there was a resolution heard on the House floor in our state, recognizing the work of our elections office. This is actually something that's fairly common that's done, but I'm totally fine continuing until next week and we can discuss that.
That'd be great, yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Is that, is that a motion?
I'd make a motion that we continue, so what?
And I'll second that motion.
One week, fine. Okay.
Okay, you got a motion and a second to continue. Item number five for one week. Just as note, when we continue, it comes back onto the agenda exactly the way it is. So if there's modifications, then that, that would probably have to be done in a commission meeting. Okay. Okay, number, number nine? Oh, did we vote on that? Okay, let's vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. That passes three zero. Thanks, Dave. We got caught halfway through a thought process. So number nine, and I apologize, I'm trying to get my, my notes back up on this. This one's to approve property tax actions included in the recommendation letter. There's, excuse me, there's two of them now that I'd like to discuss. The first one is Slice Master and then Qualtrics. And as I'm getting to those from my notes, if I, from my memory, the Slice Master, there was, there was a recommendation, I believe from one of the offices stating that there, there, I think it was the assessor's office, if I'm not correct, well, anyway, stating that there was, it was assessed a prop, too high.
Right.
And, and so, and they acknowledged that. And, and so, but of course, we're past the, the Board of Appeals process with that. And so what, now we're in a commission meeting, which opens up the box a little bigger for us to have some conversation about this. And so I just, I just wanted to, maybe if you could just go down through as I'm getting to my, my notes on it, what, what's going on there?
Okay. Adam Beck County Attorney's Office. So the, the house was assessed as a three-bedroom place, but it was actually a two-bedroom. And it was assessed as a three-bedroom for 2017, eighteen, nineteen, and then in 2020, they, they appealed it to the Board of Equalization. And with, with going to the Board of Equalization, it was then adjusted. And so now they're trying to go back and, and get it adjusted for the former years. It's, it's our recommendation that the time to appeal has passed. It is, it is in your discretion, if it is in the best human interest and interest of the state and the county, to, to approve that. But again, our, our recommendation is denying it.
And the request is for $283.33, is that accurate?
Correct.
So for me, I mean, I, in, in looking at this, obviously, on, on one, on one part, there's an acknowledgement that, that the, that the assessment... Where was it? I'm trying to use the exact wording. The assessment was wrong. Says was, so on the application, it says, "Was the tax erroneously or illegally assessed or, or assessed more than once?" And, and that's checked off as a yes. And did the county make an error? And that's checked off as a yes. And the recommendation is defer to the county attorneys for, for ability to adjust prior to, prior year's value. And so I think the question that I'd have going off of that recommendation is, what is, your, your recommendation was to deny, deny based on that it wasn't filed in a timely manner for, for that. What would be your recommendation if the, if the commission wanted to adjust the prior year's values, value?
Yeah, our, our recommendation is that they had that same avenue, that same opportunity, opportunity in 2018 and 2019 to come before the Board of Equalization and to, to have that reviewed, but they, they didn't, and so that, that time has passed.
Okay.
In addition, this board would not have any jurisdiction to change the value.
Right. No, you're right. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be the ability to adjust the prior year's value.
Right.
But it could, it, but the, but the commission could forgive the 280 whatever dollars in in what looks to be an, an over, an over-assessment.
And again, it's not a forgiveness because it has been paid, to my understanding. In addition, this is a prior property owner. This is not the current owner of the property.
Will I say that again? This is a different, well, how can they file then?
Well, they filed the request, but they are not the current owner, correct? My, my, because I'm just looking at this, it says...
They have no standing then if they don't.
Requesting a refund.
It's the previous property owner, not the current property owner.
Property owner on taxes already paid, and now they're, they're wanting a refund of those previously paid taxes.
The previous owner sold that property when?
I don't, I don't know that. I don't know the date. I'm just going what's, what's shown in the information is that it's a previous property owner. We could find that.
So do they have standing or not?
Well, if they in fact paid the taxes, I think they would have standing to request the refund if they were the source of the payment. But I guess the, the only qualification there would be a considerate, due consideration of policy considerations because these were taxes that were previously paid, not the current owner of the property. Taxes have been distributed to the various taxing entities and used by them. And that's why there's a system in place that we, that has a year, a deadline each year for anyone to protest, to file protests regarding the amount of the taxes that they're...
So the 283 isn't just to the county, but it's to all the taxing entities, the school districts, plural, however many are involved, the water districts and cities that that resident, the home resides in. So if we were to approve that, then it would come out of the county's pocket and not other taxing entities' pockets.
Well, I think we make an adjustment in future distributions so that those other entities, you, you're making a decision on behalf of all those other taxing entities, basically.
Well, I brought this up because I'm inclined to, to abate that and refund that, $283. There's nothing worse than, than high taxes, if you want to call it high taxes or medium taxes, but to be overtaxed is just really hard to swallow, if you feel like, and especially if it's, it's obvious that that did happen.
When their value was challenged and came down, did, is that because of the sale of the property or is that a new owner? Or how did the original challenge of the assessed value occur?
I assume that, that there was an appeal filed when they received their valuation notice in the...
Is this the homeowner we have walking up?
Which all property owners receive, but with regard to this one specifically, I don't know who filed the appeal.
Jimmy Stevens, Utah County Assessor's Office. The property owner was informed of the discrepancy in their square footage by their agent when they listed the property, and so that's why they appealed to the Board of Equalization based on a factual error.
So it was during the sale of the property they realized?
I was informed that I, that this microphone's not working. Is this one working better?
Pull the cable towards you. Pull it by the cable.
Is that working better? Is that working better, Alice?
Can I add something to what Jim just said?
I think there's somebody online that's making a comment. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay. So it was mentioned before about valuing based on the number of bedrooms, but generally speaking, we don't really value by bedroom, by square footage. So to Jim's point, when it talks about the difference in size and square footage, that was primarily the reason, not the number of bedrooms, because often when we inspect homes that are under construction, the number of bedrooms is not completely clear at the time we inspect because they're under construction, but the size of the houses are under, are obvious, but the bedroom count wouldn't have been a issue.
I think I only heard about half of that. It looks like Chris is coming up to clarify.
I guess serve as interpreter right now. What Mr. Garfield is saying is the valuation, and I'm not sure if it's completely relevant because it's already gone through BOE and been reduced. He's just looking for that to be extended, whatever was decided in BOE. But the concept is he's, it, it's being presented to you that he has two bedrooms, not three. What Mr. Garfield is saying is that variable's not even in the valuation process. It's all based on square footage. So when Jim came up and said, you know, "We reduce the square footage, that's why the value went down," I, I think that's all he's trying to relay to you.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
So what we're arguing, not arguing, but what we're discussing is whether it's a two-bedroom or three-bedroom, but that's not the issue. It's the square footage is what the issue is.
And that was handled in BOE. As you know, they're just asking for a pass.
Some other thoughts, commissioners? I think you know where I stand on it.
I would rather go with the appellate on this thing and grant the 283.33. So with that, I'll make a motion to grant that appeal.
And I'll second that motion.
Can we just hold that thought? Can we hold that thought as we're trying to look at all of them? So we'll, that, that one's on there as, I think we kind of know where that one's at. Let's look at the, the Qualtrics one. This one I'm not as sure about, I'll just put it that way, let's...
Is that the one where they had accidentally said they had servers that were here in Utah that were not here in Utah?
That's the one, yeah. And they wanted to amend their, they wanted to amend their application to accurately reflect.
Okay. And if my memory serves me, they were wanting to amend it for previous years?
It's my understanding, it's just this past year.
Okay.
Is it just...
Not time they raised, meaning within, it, it missed the, the mark by a couple months, month?
It was just this year?
Right.
Okay.
And of course, we don't have any value on this. It says to be calculated, so...
Yeah, they didn't provide an adjusted value. I just want to note that they provided us with that, the affidavit of their personal property. And then we sent our assessment, and on, on our, on our assessment, it says that if you wish to appeal your market value, you must apply within sixty days of this notice. So there was a notice period where they could appeal it, and that time has passed. And so that, that is our, that is why our recommendation is what it is.
Fair enough.
I'm, I'm inclined to deny this one.
Any thoughts?
Do we have any estimate on what the amount would be?
That hasn't been provided to us yet, no.
Yeah, I think it's hard to make a determination without an amount. You know, I know that when it comes to income tax, you're allowed to amend your, your income tax based off of, you know, that. I just, I hate the idea of taxing someone for something that they don't have here in Utah County. Like what, what I'm wondering is the legality of us charging a tax on something that isn't even here? Like, do, do we have the authority to tax something that isn't here?
Well, it, it's, it is based on SITUS as of January one. That's the lame date. I, I came up just to give you the option. If you want to continue this one, we can provide you with more data.
Yeah, I would, I would like that.
So that is one option that the, the commission has, so...
I don't think this board has any jurisdiction to allow a, a party to file a late affidavit. So they would have to file their affidavit and see what the dollar amount is because the only jurisdiction you would have would be to abate or not abate a dollar amount.
Right.
We don't have a dollar amount.
And there's nothing even there to consider, so... So I guess my recommendation would be to strike it from this letter. If that information is provided-
And then if they come back with an amount, then we can discuss it.
Put on a subsequent letter after that's been reviewed.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay. All right, so I will assume in the motion then that we approve the tax actions included in the recommendation letter with the two modifications, the approval of the SLICE master and the striking of the Qualtrics.
So moved.
I would second that motion.
I got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes 3-0. Okay, number 16 is to receive the recommendation proposals for the RFP for the 2021. This is Municipal Financial Advisory Services. We had two, as far as I know, we had two individuals that are two companies that applied for this. And the recommending... The recommendation was one, Stiefel Public Finance, and two, Zion's Public Finance. And I note that Stiefel did get the unanimous recommendation from that recommending board.
Yes, that's right.
I think Bill just answered my questions. Thank you, Commissioner.
And I appreciate the work. I personally concur with their findings on it. I just want to note this, and that is, is that it's always a good business practice. I have enjoyed working with Stiefel Financial Public Finances. And I did not want to be a part of the, at all, the RFP on this so they could go through a process and there be open and transparent for all to see it. And so I think anytime these come up, and we always had an option of just continuing that contract, but I think it's appropriate to have them go through a process like this as much as possible so we can let the public know what's going on and have others have input into it as well.
Who was on that committee?
Robert Baxter, Purchasing Manager. It was Josh Daniels, Kim Jackson, Treasurer,
Dave Shawcroft, and one more.
Jeremy Walker.
Jeremy Walker, yes.
Do any of you have anything to say, or just that you all recommended, so we're good?
I mean, it's really close. You have two companies that basically can provide the same service. There were some slight differences in cost and a few other considerations. I mean, it's very close. They're very comparable. But there were some advantages, I think, to staying with Stiefel, just that the level of expertise that they have with our county and specifically that sort of institutional history, I think is useful, helpful. You know, not to say I think the other competitor could do a good job and probably could get to know our needs. There was also a thought that a lot of other entities are already working with Zion's, which is both a benefit, but potentially you could consider a little bit of a unique level of service from somebody who's not serving all of the other entities, especially insofar as we have arrangements with bonds where, in the example of UTA, for example, you know, we're holding bonds as a county really to the benefit of the services provided by UTA, in some sense on behalf of UTA. Well, UTA uses Zion's for their bonds, and so using Stiefel might be good for us, you know, avoid any sort of perception of a conflict. I mean, they're very comparable. I think it was very close, at least in my mind, probably in the other members of the committee.
But unanimous?
Yes, it was very close, but it was unanimous.
Okay. Well, I feel comfortable with that. If there's no further discussion, I'm fine to move that we accept Stiefel as the-
I can second that motion.
...whatever the contract, okay.
And then for... And the proposal for further negotiations in the word of the contract.
Yes, yes, for that discussion.
I got a motion and a second to that effect. All in favor, say aye.
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 That passes 3-0. Okay, number 22 is to approve and authorize the commission's signature on a 2021 Utah County Fair vendor management agreement.
I had some questions on this one. I noticed in the agenda system that we didn't have... It wasn't checked off by purchasing or legal, so I've got just a few questions. Robert, if you don't mind, I was going to ask, had you had a chance to look at this in this contract for vendor management agreement?
I've looked at it. I did not look at it before, you know, previous to coming onto the agenda. I have since had a chance to look at it. Couple of questions that came up to me. One is, as I understand it, there's the... I have no idea what the dollar amount is of this contract because that would determine what kind of threshold we're looking at, you know, if it's something that should go out for an RFP or not. It mentions, you know, a 50% kind of profit sharing, but I have no idea what that dollar amount would be. So there's no way to tell whether we're talking about a couple thousand dollars or $50,000 or whatever. I don't know.
Okay, so you hadn't looked at it yet? Okay.
I've looked at it, but it's not included in the contract.
Oh, so you haven't had a chance to ask those questions then?
Right.
Okay.
Have you had a chance to visit with Court? He's been our legal counsel on this.
I have not, no.
Okay. Well, I had a couple of questions for Court, too, then. I was going to say, because I noticed that the legal box wasn't checked either, Court. I noticed on the contract, it talked about deposits within seven days. And I'm wondering, I know that under state law, we have to make deposits within 24 hours anytime we receive money as a county. And I was wondering if a vendor is accepting money on behalf of the county, are they beholden to the same state law that allows, that requires us to make a deposit within 24 hours?
I would think not. This vendor is acting as an independent contractor. And so we don't control anything about how it's performed, et cetera. And so we would... What section are you referring to specifically, Commissioner?
I can't remember on the exact section. I just know that there's... Like, that's the reason why we make deposits on a nightly basis with cash receipts.
And it-
I would have to look it up.
And it may be under the contract that, you know, I haven't looked at it in a while myself, so...
Yeah, I haven't looked at it recently. I just know that this is a problem we ran into in, I think it was late 2019, which has triggered my memory on that.
But the contractor would not be held to those same standards as the county on nightly deposits.
Okay. And... So do we have... Do we have any estimates on what the cost would be under that, under the contract?
The booth fees? No. Those were... The contractor was trying to come to an arrangement of those fees based upon what she thought was fair and reasonable. But we don't have that. We can put this off a week to get that information, both for the contract and for Mr. Baxter.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other questions? I was going to move to continue this item for a week so that maybe we can get some estimates on those so that we can make sure that we're following proper purchasing agreement rules on that. So I would move that we continue this item for a week.
I don't have a problem with that. I don't think there's an issue for the vendor, I don't think, at this point.
Yeah, I would assume that we're not talking about a lot of money on the vendor fees, the booth fees, so...
I do think there is a June 1 deadline for submission according to the contract, so that will probably have to be changed as well if it's continued.
Okay.
Okay.
Right.
I'm fine, yeah.
Fine with that?
So we make a motion to continue this one week?
Yeah, so I made the motion to continue for one week.
June 2?
Sounds right. Our next commission meeting, June 2?
Yes. Yeah, so I'll move to continue that till June 2.
June 2, okay. I'll second that motion.
I got a motion and a second to continue item number 22 to June 2. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. That passes 3-0. Number 23 is to approve and authorize the signing of an agreement between Utah County and Demolition Derby for the 2021 Utah County Fair.
So on that one, I was noticing that the amount was $93,035, which is above the $2,500 threshold for needing three bids and the $50,000 threshold for needing an RFP. So I was also wondering, sorry, Robert, to make you come back up here again. I did look for you before the meeting and wasn't able to get ahold of you because you were in meetings. So I'm wondering what the purchasing amount on that is.
Well, I guess my question... This hasn't really come up in the past because in the past, we weren't the ones doing the contract. It was done externally. Now that it's being done inside, now it needs to comply with our internal purchasing rules. So unless this is, you know, sole source, if this is the only vendor that can provide this service, to my knowledge, that hasn't been determined. You know, I haven't conducted any kind of research. I'm not aware if there are others or not. If there are others, I mean, there are two options. If it is, if it's a sole source, then, you know, we declare it a sole source. If it's not a sole source and there's some compelling reason not to compete it, then, you know, if we can make a valid argument to not compete it, then I can provide an exemption for it. Otherwise, it would need to go for a competitive process.
Would one week be enough time for you to look at that and let us know? I'm just wondering if I continue this for a week, would that give you time to know how this falls under those rules and...
Yeah, I mean, we should be able to make that determination. Now, I guess the question is if it needs to go, you know, to an RFP, is there time for that?
Yes, and, yeah, and we didn't start this actual study until, I think it was the middle of March, when we convened and we designated co-directors, a couple of people that live in the county that have been experienced with this. But we were verbally saying this is a sole source because of short notice.
Yeah, but I don't know if that is allowed under state law. Is sole source because of short notice one of the provisions?
Well, I'm sensitive to this one because the Derby one, we're in competition on the Derby stuff. We, I mean, we've got Wasatch County, you have Juab County. We're always trying to hit a certain time slot. You know, these derbies are a little fickle because there's only so many people that actually register to even... I mean, you can't just crash up cars all day long and think that you can make anything money on this, you know? I mean, it's more of a hobby. It's a black hole, and so...
And don't get me wrong, I'm not opposed to a Derby. I mean, I am a country-
The Derby is so important to the fair for our, on our revenue side that...
I think the argument can be made. I just didn't see the sole source letter attached in the agenda system, and that's why I was asking.
Because there's a difference between a sole source... I mean, as the purchasing manager, I have the discretion, if it's in the best interest of the county, to grant an exemption. That's not the same thing as a sole source. Sole source means nobody else can do it.
Right.
But if there's a compelling argument why we should go with this particular vendor and not compete it, if that argument can be made, then I can do a letter of determination to grant an exemption, which it sounds like is probably would be the case here. Because it doesn't, you know, unless it's the only person who can provide this service, then a letter of determination would be the only other option if we can make a compelling argument.
It was tough to get them because they were, as Commissioner Lee pointed out, they were actually due to be going to Juab. And so they're... In fact, they were getting more money going to Juab than two hours. So they were able to fit hours in before they go to Juabs.
Yeah, okay, so I think obviously in order to meet state purchasing guidelines, we would need a letter because we don't have an RFP or bids, right? I mean, at $93,000, I guess it would be an RFP.
Do we have Court again to comment on that?
Commissioner, it's my understanding that, in fact, we moved our normal date of the county fair in order to have the Derby part of the county fair. And what was the other... What's the other question?
Whether there should be sole sourced or designated vendor.
Because this is over the $50,000 threshold, we would need an exception to the purchasing rule under state law.
And I don't know if it's sole source or not, but I think it would fit into the best interest determination to be made by the purchasing agent that, you know, that there's, we really have no other viable alternative.
And I, yeah, I think just from my standpoint, I would be in favor of getting the letter. I just think that we should have a letter before we approve a $93,000 contract.
What if we approved the contract subject to getting that letter? So, I mean, that letter, if Robert's looking at that, he could, maybe he might be able to do that this afternoon or tomorrow. And that way, there could be some movement on it, subject, you know, subject to that letter. If not, then we have a different situation that we'd have to go through.
I would be willing to do that if, moving forward, I mean, this would be a one-time exception moving forward. I think that we need to use proper purchasing law. I mean, technically, this is in violation of state purchasing code if we are signing a $93,000 contract without following state law. And so if we did an exception, I would only feel comfortable doing a one-time exception. But moving forward, we would need to follow all purchasing and state laws.
Yeah, and that would not be in violation if the approval is contingent upon that letter in place.
So maybe, yeah, but I mean, it's an exception meeting. I don't really want to be voting on contracts in the future without the letter beforehand, is my point. Absolutely.
And I'm fine with that, only if we're going to do that, this, and I'm glad you held it, Commissioner, because this agreement is not the final agreement.
Okay.
The provider requested a revision to subsection 2, compensation and payment. It still comes out to the same amount, but he wanted the... And I think the correct amount is $92,035. Paid $7,000 between the promoters, and with the remaining balance not to exceed $85,000, which would include these promoter operation costs further down in the chart. It's at the top of the next page of not more than $1,000 for event insurance. And so if you'd approve it with those amendments-
Event insurance is probably necessary for a Derby.
Yes.
Because if we went back in time a little bit, the tax and tourism agency approved up to $250,000 for this event. And we went in, I think, starting with, I think it was $115, and it settled down to a maximum of $150, but we're still below that. And so this is a breakout of where all those different funds are going to. So it's not one lump amount going to a agency, but it's going to a variety of individuals, including the $75,000 that will go to a wide range of people and not to one specific group.
Right. So if we're holding, I mean, if we need to modify it anyway because there are modifications to the final contract, then getting the letter from the purchasing agent shouldn't throw us off timewise at all, right?
No, in fact, we have, we have, the amended version is already signed by the promoters.
Okay.
So...
Which is on here. It's on here.
Is that the one that's on here?
Yeah, it needs to be uploaded.
Isn't it already? I thought I saw two on there.
Yeah, we, actually, the Attorney's Department put this on, so we thought... Oh, thank you. That is tall. So I actually thought that the updated one was on there. So I would also agree that we need to continue just based upon that. However, I did want you to know that it did have on that contract that was on there for $890 for the insurance, and that's been carried each time. We, if we don't get this signed, I would say by next week, we are in danger of losing the Derby, which makes us really lose our funding for the fair because that is a huge part of the fair. And I've been, and I'm representing the board on this one. And as far as the fair board goes, we do understand that it's a sole source, but we're happy to go through to get a letter. Thank you.
So the signed copy we have on here is not the correct one?
So I actually put the correct dollar amounts on there, but I thought that legal was putting on the new contract. But I guess that didn't get through.
Got it.
Yeah, so we'll do it next week. I think next week would be fine. I'm fine continuing. We can get the letter. That gives us time to get the right contract, and everything will be tied up with a nice bow.
I don't think that's a problem for the fair board, but let our attorney, he's on our fair board as well.
Oh, perfect.
Appreciate that appointment, Lisa.
You've been there enough to be automatically appointed.
You know, I think that the commission could go forward and approve it subject to obtaining the purchasing letter with the amendments I stated. to obtaining the purchasing letter with the amendments I stated. And it could be approved today, if you're comfortable with that.
Are you comfortable with that, Robert? Okay, perfect. All right. Well, then I will make a motion to approve item number 23 pending a letter from the purchasing agent and amendments to the contract as court described.
I second that motion.
Okay, I got a motion and a second to approve and authorize the signing of the agreement as stated, number 23, with the amendments and the letter. All in favor, say aye.
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 That passes 3-0. Okay. Number 24 is to approve and adopt a resolution authorizing commission chair to sign an interlocal agreement between Utah County and Eagle Mountain Redevelopment Agency for the Sweetwater Industrial Park Community Project area. This has got a long history.
Do we have...
I'm not sure where to start.
As you said, I don't know. Where do we want to start with it?
Do you want to say anything, Renee?
And Commissioner Sakic, you had mentioned that maybe we could take a short recess. Is that something you're still interested in?
If it was necessary to kind of, to confer a little bit more.
Let's take a, let's take a short recess.
Then I'll make a, how long do you want to make it for? 10, 15?
10, 15. Let's do 15 minutes.
And I'll make a motion. We take recess for 10 minutes to confer.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 We're going to recess for, was it 15?
10 minutes.
I just barely got it as I walked in.
You ready?
Yes, sir.
We already had your discussions or whatever on stuff. You're ready to go?
Um, yes, I'm, Alice, do you have a laser pointer? I didn't think to ask for one. Do you have the slide projector gun?
Have it loaded up with them?
Yeah, the slides loaded up. Slides, were they loaded up?
Yeah, thank you.
Do you want a hard copy?
We'll be listening. Lisa, Lisa?
So you're, so we're, I mean, so.
I'm just gonna go through, I'm just gonna go through if it's okay with the commissioner. Go through any comments, if people want to make comments. Then I'm gonna bring it up to here first and this back. They just don't want to get into it.
This is the first one like this I've done.
Yeah.
It's good call.
So your film is over at rules.
Alive?
For the benefit of the business.
Okay, I, we're, we're back live. And can I get, can I get Ben Stanley this time? Can you confirm that you can hear us and we can hear you on, on Zoom?
Yes, Commissioner, we can hear you well.
Fantastic, thank you. I like being able to get those done. Okay, our next agenda item is to approve and adopt a resolution authorizing the commission chair to sign an interlocal agreement between Utah County and Eagle Mountain Redevelopment Agency for the Sweetwater Industrial Park Community Project Area Number Two. And before we have more discussion on this or some comments on it, we'll, we'll, we'll open it up for, for comment on this, on this issue. If there's any, if there's any comment, we'll, we'll be able to listen to that. And then what we'll do is we'll, we'll pull the discussion back up here to the board for further discussion and then go to a, go to the resolution. Any comments online, Alice? Okay, thank you. Okay, with, with that, I'm gonna give, I don't know how brief, a brief history, but I'll give some history. Eagle, Eagle Mountain has been, for the years, for many years, has been looking to economic development wise, and I remember years ago when, when they, when they came, they came to me and they asked and they said, you know what, we're having a little bit of a hard time out here getting, getting businesses to come out to that area. It's not along I-15, we all know that, it's, it's kind of off. And so they were looking for all kinds of different areas. They took, they, they, they took and decided to go after data centers. And, and by doing that, one, one became available that was, that was not adopted or not used in Salt Lake County. They decided not to go that direction and they courted them and went after Facebook and landed Facebook. And that was, it was an anchor, there was always an understanding with, with Facebook that they were going to be an anchor in that area to help attract other businesses there, which is needed and necessary for, for the cities to be able to grow and, and to help offset some of the tax burdens that, that they have on residents out there. And so that, that went through and then on, then from there, there was a little bit of a tumbling effect, and this is my perception of it. There's a little bit of a tumbling effect in the sense of others that were looking out there as well. We got Tyson Foods that went out there and there was some negotiation that went along that way that, that has, has borne some fruit. And I'm, and I know there, there's gotta be lots of others that are headed that direction or looking that way. And so because, because of that, there was, there's a company now that, that has, is looking out there that Eagle Mountain has been negotiating with for some time. I'm assuming it's probably years. And they're trying to, they're trying to find us another, another data center. And they're going down through the, the, the process to secure, secure them and their, their code name on this, just so if it looks a little funny on there is Sweetwater. That's not their real name, but that's their code name as they're trying to protect certain identities. I'm not sure when that actually gets released, but anyway, for now, we're gonna refer to it as Sweetwater or, or Fremont. I don't know why we got them both going, but Fremont and Sweetwater is going. And, and so with, with that, we have gone back and forth, from my understanding, the, the city and, and the school district and probably other, other, other smaller districts, maybe water districts and so forth, have went through a process and have, have agreed to, to move forward with a, with a plan in place in the way of tax increment financing. And that's why we're here, is to look at tax increment financing for this. And, and we've had a little bit of a different path. Our path has, has not been one where we, where we have followed, just followed along. We've, we've been, we've wanted to be at the table, working directly with the company and, and that has, that has been, there's, I mean, not with, not necessarily with the company, but it's, it's been a little painful, you know, for us to kind of run through this, this process to get there, at least especially for me to negotiate on behalf of the citizens of Utah County and find something that's equitable. And as, and as I've said to the, the city and also to the company and, and others, I see my role as one where I'm negotiating on behalf of the citizens of Utah County and trying to find a, a place and pattern that makes sense as we're competing in a worldwide market, which is the hardest part. And I've, I've teased my mind back and forth when it comes to what is the proper role? And what is the proper role for, for government in the, in these entity, when it comes to entities like this? I have been, I've been beat up different ways on what tax increment financing should look like and how it should work and how come it's not applied to all and so on and so forth. And so you'll see later on on our agenda also that we have, we do have a work session to talk a little bit more about tax increment financing, which is, which is a challenging, it's a challenging area. But nevertheless, we're, we're there, we're there, we're here in the sense that we have gone through and, and asked some really, really super hard questions with the company and, and with their firm that represents them. And I think we're, we're at a place that we can now start to, you know, peel it back and see if the commission, and part of the, the hardest part of, of negotiating like this is that you kind of do it a little bit of a vacuum, right? It's, it's not so easy because you got three commissioners who, you know, have different levels of experience, especially in this. And then, you know, I've been here and went through it before and the two new commissioners are trying to see it for the first time and understand it. And it's, it's a challenge, it's just, it's been a challenge. And, you know, and it's, and it's moved, it's moved dramatically from even the first of the year, you know, with, with a different commissioner that sat in that seat. So it's, it's been an interesting, you know, metamorphosis that we've gone through. So where, what we have negotiated with the company, specifically with the company, I'm not, not necessarily with the city, we have gone back and forth with the city on a few things and there's a few areas that we'll probably have to touch base on. But with, with the company, we had a couple of, of concerns. One of them was the length, the, the length of this agreement, it goes, it, it has a five year trigger, you know, date that's out there and then it goes, and then there, the cap on it is 40 years. And, and I had said over and over that I'll be pushing up daisies by the time this thing actually finishes out. And so it makes me, it sets me back a little bit in the sense of what are we doing? I have traditionally, when we look at tax increment financing, the 20-year model is, is the water, is the model that feels comfortable, just because that's something that we've done. I've, I've heard from the company and others and in different parts of the country, sometimes they push that out to 50. We're not there. I recognize that we sit in one of the, the economic hubs of the country right now and we're, everyone says number one or whatever in the case in the way of economic development. So for generations, we have been trying to build something that will be attractive and now we're seeing that start to come to fruition and, and it comes with its own challenges. But, so what we've negotiated with, what I have negotiated with, with the, with the company over this period of time, and I know the other commissioners have been abreast to this, and doing their own negotiations, you can imagine as we go through this, it's negotiate here, what about that? And this one says, and it comes back, is that there's the, the time increment on this thing started off with a 40 years, that, that 40 years still stands in place as an ultimate cap, but there is a 30-year, there's a 30-year period of time in which there is some, some steps in which the company has obligated themselves to perform. Their performance matrix, I was pretty hard on the performance matrix, I want to make sure that they actually perform, because there's nothing worse than to go through a tax increment financing for 20 years and at the end say, we got nothing, there was nothing out of this, you know, and then they leave or whatever. So in this case, the performance matrix, they, they, they came back and under, under ours, and I realize that our, our negotiations are a little bit different than the cities or the, or the school districts, but under our negotiations, they agreed to go with a 30 years and, and they would put in 1.2 billion dollars of, of monies, hard money, hard money meaning that it goes into infrastructure and goes into, in the ground, infrastructure into the project, into the buildings, into the sewer lines, the water lines, the electrical, whatever the case may be, it's hard money, it's not soft money in the way of salaries or benefits or overhead or any of that. That 1.2 billion dollars is, if it's not reached by the 30-year mark, then, then the real property has, is, is on the line for, subject to going to a, I think that, I think, Dave, if I'm not mistaken, the real property is actually on the line for not being assessed after that. Is that correct? Wanda?
Yes, the, the real property portion.
Real property portion. There's two, there's two, there's, there's personal property and, and, and the real property. And so the real property then would be on the line at that 30-year mark. I still had some, some concerns with that, there was more negotiation that went, that went through. And, and, and where, where we're at now is that, that, that there has been some language added to our, our, our agreement. And it might be best, but just to kind of summarize it a little bit, and that is, is that we are agreeing to tax increment financing at 100% for the personal property, which is going to be the servers. And maybe to clarify this a little bit, because I was asking why we can't knock that back, across the country, most, most other states don't have this and, and it makes it really hard when they're putting in servers and changing them out. And so they, anyway, it was, it was a, a point where I think we kind of backed off on that, realizing that 100%. So 100% on personal property, the 67.5% on, on, on real property. And, and this, what, what, what we've negotiated is that there is going to be a potential renegotiation at 20 years, so we'll be voting on a 20-year, 20, and this is with the company as we have been working back and forth in it for our, for our benefit. And, and there's, and there's some language in there that will allow us to hopefully feel more comfortable. And it's a renegotiation language, which we have listed on here as 29. The parties will renegotiate, renegotiate this agreement if on the 20th anniversary of the date of the execution, the participant has failed to complete the construction of at least one primary building as defined in the development agreement, failed to invest at least $600 million in the project area. And, and when we, now that we're back up here, maybe if I can pause for one second on that $600 million, there's some clarifying language that I think that we need to amend into that, and Dave has that clarifying language, if you could just read that?
Yes, I'll, I'll do that. So that would be paragraph 29 under renegotiation. The first sentence, item double I, failed to invest at least 600 million in, and then we would add language, infrastructure comma, capital improvements comma, and personal property improvements comma, and then continuing the project area. That same language then would also be added in paragraph number five, four lines from the bottom of that paragraph. Participants do not invest a total of at least 1.2 billion in, and then we would add the language, the same language, infrastructure comma, capital improvements comma, and personal property improvements comma, in the project area, et cetera.
So if I could pause for one second? So if I could pause for one second on that, and then I'll continue reading on it. But I'm wondering if that is an amendment to the proposal. I want to get the commissioner's thoughts on that.
Have you already talked to the corporation?
Yes.
Because I didn't pick up this piece earlier.
Yes.
Okay.
I did confirm this with them, and so they're agreeing to it.
That I like because it allows us to define clearly what that means when you say $600 million.
You know, and I think that's a very important point. When we look at these types of agreements, one of the criticisms that I've personally had and that I've heard others have with agreements like this is sometimes these tax credits are given to companies, but there's nothing to hold them accountable for actually investing. And I want to commend you on not only requiring that there be investment, but that you're very specific about it. And I think that that really sets this apart from other agreements like this that I've seen. So that's really great, and I would support your amendment.
Fantastic. Thank you. Okay, going on to a triple I. Well, I'm going to back up a little bit because I don't know if it necessarily makes sense. So I'll read it again, talking about that we have at least one primary building as defined in the development agreement, or in the double I, failed to invest, failed to invest at least $600 million. And then the continuing language that Dave had in there, in the project area, or defaulted under the development agreement, or failed to timely cure that default. They wanted that in there, and I understand that. And the thought was, what if they were $200 short by that, that 20-year renegotiation? They want to have at least an opportunity to cure, you know, to cure that in a timely manner. In renegotiating this agreement, the parties will attempt to agree to terms consistent with the terms set forth herein on a reasonable expectation of the parties as of the date of the execution hereof. Provided, however, the annual real property and personal property tax increment percentages set forth in section six will not be modified. If the parties are unable to agree to terms in connections with such renegotiations, the parties will submit the matter to binding arbitration and abide by the decisions of an agreed arbitrary body. And so with that additional language in there, I mean, thoughts from the other commissioners?
No, again, I think you did right by adding that language to it because that has a clear map as to what the real expectations are between both of us and for the future commissioners.
Okay. And then also, other language added in is under number 30, and it is an annual meeting. This one, this one says, I'll just read it, says, "The annual meeting. While this agreement remains in force and in effect, the county and the participant shall meet on an annual basis to mutually provide development updates. The updates may include, but are not limited to, development and infrastructure planning, marketing barriers and trends, and other updates as necessary for the parties to remain abreast of issues pertaining to local economic conditions and development of the project area. Outside of the annual meetings, the county and the participant may meet on an ad hoc basis to discuss the timing and development of any forthcoming projects or infrastructure projects being undertaken by the county, which may impact the project area." Just for reference on this one, you know, there's a lot of words in here. It's mainly a meeting in which we sit down and talk. In just full disclosures, there's real no teeth in this one. It's just a meeting that happens. That gives me a little bit of pause. I truly believe that things in writing have long memories, even past elected officials who move on. And so, but I don't know how, and I wasn't able, and so commissioners, I'm just straightforward with this. I have no way to measure anything here on a performance basis because we have it tied, you know, to the renegotiation side. And so this, from the company's standpoint to me, is it is more of a trust factor than it is a contract factor, which again, it's words, you know, and I think if we actually write it down into contract language, it becomes meaning. My hope is that in the future, if we agree to that part of this, that it will be a productive meeting talking about. And the reason why I say that is because I know that there's no perfect agreements that go. And when we're talking about agreements that possibly can go 45 years, there's going to be hiccups. There's going to be concerns. There may be conflict. And I don't want, I wouldn't want, as a company, to have maybe even a personality problem or something like that thwart what's going on. And on the other hand, if there is some serious concerns that are coming up, I would like to have the opportunity to say, can we cure these? I know it's not necessarily written in a contract, but there are additional things that are coming up. And so that's kind of where I'm at with that. I can live with that language unless there are other thoughts.
What you're allowing is not only just an annual meeting, which will have agenda items as to the progress of the development, but you're allowing for informal meetings throughout each year as frequently as needed to clarify things that were in preparation for an annual meeting, things that were after the annual meeting, issues that are coming up that they need to be aware of, we need to be aware of. And so I think that's useful. It helps us both stay on track and we keep the dialogue open.
Yeah, I think it's great. I know that it would be nice to be aware of the infrastructure projects they're doing. I mean, the whole reason we do these economic development programs is because these companies are going to come in and build infrastructure that the city benefits from, and that the community benefits from, and that the citizens benefit from. And that infrastructure is infrastructure that we don't have to build using taxpayer dollars, right? So keeping on top of what they are doing and the value they're adding to the community, I think is always a good thing. And it also helps remind us while we're here and people in the future why this took place. It took place because they are building infrastructure that we don't have to use taxpayer dollars to build.
And the language here allows a close alliance between the county and the project, but also between the county, the city, even the school districts, others. So we're always talking about what's going on, how this is developing.
Yeah.
Yes. And so the rest of the agreement, you have the rest of the agreement. Those were just the amendments, the modifications. The other modification that I recommend to the commissioners is that it does have on the low-income housing a 50%. And I prefer that that be changed to 100% for the county so that the county can help to offset some of the concerns that we've had with the 67.5. That is an offset that can be used by the county. And so I would, I would motion, or not motion, but I'd recommend that that 100% be included into the language.
And some, what are the insights from the city on that? Because in a limited perspective, I haven't talked to any length about it, but I wonder if the 50-50 is best to keep the city, some funds coming to them for that future need that they're going to have over the next 40 years as well. That's what I had in mind. Because we will see others coming into the county, and they will likely have something similar to this range that the county will be able to draw from as well. So I don't know if 100% is necessary, but I'd like to have your thoughts on that.
Well, I'm pretty stubborn at the 100%. I'll just tell you. I don't know where you're at on this one, Commissioner.
Well, I think it would be nice. I mean, if we look at it, I know that Eagle Mountain has received a lot of funding from these affordable housing dollars for Facebook and for Tyson, for those agreements. And I don't, I mean, I don't know what their plan is. I don't know how much affordable housing they plan to put in their city or how many single-family homes they plan to put in their city. But I know that there's a lot of other areas in the county that we could really utilize that money. So I think it sounds like a good idea.
Yeah. Again, in my mind, I'm thinking of future entities that come to the county that will do the same type of thing and use that 50% toward the county, which would augment the affordable housing needs we have in the countywide area. This might help the city specifically as they grow. And they're facing rapid growth. This is not a, you know, I've gone to die over. I'm happy to go with 100%. I'm voicing what I think is probably a good thing to do, to have Eagle Mountain have half and the county keep half. So that's my...
The other option that I see is that if we were to go with the 50-50, then we would have, I would recommend that we offset the 65.5. Because part of the 67.5, part of the offset that we get with that is the 100% of the low-income housing portion to it, which offsets that for us. It doesn't come directly, I want to make sure that it's understood. I know that that money doesn't come straight to the county. It's not that. But it's the ability for the county to be able to use that, and so I see it as a benefit countywide in that. So if, and I don't recommend this, but if we were to take and change that 67.5 and lower that down and do a 50-50, you know, that could be, that could be used, but I'm not sure that anybody's really on board for that.
No, 67.5, if we try to bring that down, that won't go anywhere. Because we've already, I've discussed that with them. They talked about the housing allocation as part of that. Reason why they're using the 67, and that impacts, but allows them to function.
It gets me, it personally gets me to see that 67.5 more along the lines of 57.
Yes.
And so that's, and that was, you know, negotiated back and forth and talked about extensively.
We haven't been able to confer on this, obviously, so I just want to know your thoughts about it.
I want to see that 100% in there. I'll just state that. I want to see that 100%.
Would you give me a return if I went with it?
So you're pretty set on the 100%?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're okay with that?
Yeah. What are your thoughts on that, Commissioner Sakovich?
Again, it's just, I was thinking, I see what you're saying about that. I'm thinking, again, the city itself and others. But it's not one that I'm so set that I would die for it, so I'm happy to approve and go with...
I think I'm, I mean, I'm along the lines of Commissioner Sakovich where I'm not, I don't think it's, I'm so set that I would die on it. You know, if we met halfway, 75, I'd...
I just worry about losing friendship with the mayor.
Well...
I'm willing to challenge it.
Got to keep this light as much as possible.
No, so I agree with you, Commissioner Sakovich. It's not something I'm going to die on, but I think it would be fantastic. I know that we are in the middle of a housing crisis countywide, not just out wide.
Then I'm happy to go with 100% to the county if we can change that in the contract.
So with that, that's all I have. I know that was probably a little bit longer. There's more to the agreement, but I think these are the kind of the nuts and bolts with the key points to it.
Okay, so I, just to recap, what I have here is the, adding the specifics in paragraph 29, section III, and paragraph five of the amendment that Dave read, the infrastructure, et cetera. And then also, so that would be one amendment. And then as another amendment you would like negotiated with the city, 100% of the housing. That's a separate amendment. Was there another amendment, or were we just discussing the annual meetings and...
Yeah, those are just...
And you included the language about the capital improvements, infrastructure, and that type of thing already.
Yeah, that was from Dave's language. So is...
29, I was going to say, chapters, excuse me, paragraphs 29 and 30 for me helped a lot because there were some discussions on commitments, and I think this will at least alleviate any potential future concerns.
Okay. So was that a motion?
I was recapping first.
Recapping, okay.
I was recapping.
You can take that as a motion.
All right, so moved. I will move that we accept item number 24 with amendments in paragraphs 29, II, and paragraph five to add language on infrastructure as per Dave Shawcroft and an amendment to negotiate with the city for 100% of the housing subsidy.
Just for clarification, it would not be to negotiate, it just would be approving it at 100%.
Oh, yes. Approve it, approve it at 100%. Yes, that's because you didn't want to negotiate, you want it at 100. Yes.
And also just for clarification, the document that we are discussing is a draft dated 5/26/21 at 12:30 Mountain Time.
Right.
Just so we know what document we're referencing.
There's been multiple drafts.
Yeah, and we just got this just before the meeting began, so yes.
Oh, yes, I see that in the upper corner here.
So I have a motion.
I can then second that motion that we approve and adopt agenda item 24 with those adjustments verbalized.
Okay. If there's no other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That passes 3-0. Okay. Item number 25 is to approve and adopt a resolution amending the 2021 budgets in the county's general fund and various other budgetary funds, and revising the county's estimations of revenues.
Do we have slides ready for that? Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. I should go full electronics. It wouldn't be this long pause. First of all, the approach in this second proposal was that we would not take in account any federal funding related to COVID, emergency rental, and Rescue Plan Acts. What would it be like if COVID never existed? What would our current cash flow look like? What are our expenses? And at the same time, ensure that where are we as a county with the growth, supporting the various cities who will be addressing those growths more particularly than the county? The county has an absolute direct involvement with property rights, security, records of all sorts that the county maintains. There is a direct correlation to each resident. But I have in mind that cities will be absorbing most of the economic growth, if not all, because thus far, Utah County doesn't have an economic department that manages economic growth. And I had mentioned it back in December 19, 2019, when this came up. It says that tax increases, especially when they're sharp, tend to shock economic structures. And verbally, there's nothing formal, of course, but some have said that they're considering moving out of the county into a different state because of the rapid growth of taxes. We will see if they do that or not. And then continue to ensure that whatever we do, the county is able to operate on a solid footing. And lastly, I didn't want to consider 2020 tax rates because, or growth, I mean, because it might be a one-time aberration. Because we did see sizable growth over the year, this 2020, and 21 might be different. So what I did is I looked at several years, but I just captured the past five years on our property tax and sales tax and looking for what our short history has been like. And I tried, in this case, these are not exact amounts. They're all, all of these are rounded. And I tried to, whatever I'm looking at, I tried to be conservative. But we've gone and seen an increase over five years of nearly $8 million in new property taxes and nearly $11 million in new sales taxes. 2017, we saw a 4.5% growth rate approximately in property tax and 4.5% in... 2017, we saw four and a half percent growth rate approximately in property tax and 4.6, then we dropped a little bit to 4.1. 2020 was that aberration I mentioned, it was about 8.9 roughly. And then sales tax followed a similar pattern, only it, I noticed in 2017, we were roughly 9% growth from 2016, then six and a half, then seven and eighths in 2019, then it shot up as a COVID buy-at-home frenzy went on. And what that will be like for this year and next year remains to be seen. So roughly, we saw nearly a little over $7.5 million in new sales tax revenue. And so far, at this point in 2021, we've got nearly $9 million in sales tax revenue. We underestimated thus far anyway, a little over $1 million. And we're only, not quite halfway in the year. Again, this aberration of 2020 might continue this current year. It might go, spill into next year, I don't know. So with that in mind, we had all these averages per year of growth. So I chose, very scientifically, I just picked a number. I averaged it out and said that we'll use 2019's roughly 4% growth rate based on what we did in 2020 for 21, and do the same thing for sales tax and just use a growth rate of 4% instead of the previous 9, 6, 7, and 11% growth rate. And see what we look like in 21. What you see here in 2020, in red, the 38.64 million, that would be if we did not have the $19 million tax increase. Our actual property sales tax was nearly $58 million, and I think that's still off a few million. I didn't want to be overly inflate that. So I was looking as if the tax increase never happened, what it would look like. So based on that, the property tax, if it was 38, almost 39 million in 2020, and we had a 4% growth, and for 21, we could expect roughly 40 millions in property tax, and then again, nearly 38 million in sales tax. And so that was my look at it. Again, I took in consideration that 20, maybe 21, we will see what happens in 22. It may be a COVID blip. So with that in mind, with that history in hand, I thought we might be able to do this. We could, based on the growth patterns of very conservative 4% growth, and anticipate that 4%, even over the next two, three years, we should be able to increase the projected county property tax another $1.5 million. We could possibly increase projected county option sales tax another million and a half. Based on that, then we could then cut three more million dollars from the general property tax, and then again, move eight million from the general fund to the capital improvement for future needs in our structures, county buildings, and future buildings that we will contemplate that we will need to have in the north and perhaps the south in the years to come. If this is approved, then this will be an additional 3 million on the 4.8 that was recommended and adopted a month ago, reducing about 7.8 million overall from the 19.3, leaving about almost 11.5 million of the original 19.3. And so that's my proposal. So questions?
So total, how much have you, between the 4.8 and the 3.0, I have two questions. Number one, what total of increased revenue does that, between the two budget adjustments, the April 21st and the one you're proposing today? What, what's the total of revenue increase that you've estimated?
What I see in total revenue for increase for this current year, we're running at least on the sales side with almost five months done, we're almost at 1.3 million in new sales tax revenue thus far. And we are at.
So it's year-to-date, we're 1.3 million up?
Yes.
Okay, but how much, in the, how much did you, in the, in the April property tax, in the April budget adjustment? How much was estimated to increase on revenues then?
I'm trying to remember. I didn't bring that slide with me. Do you recall, Commissioner Lee, what you had in that 4.8 million cut, projected growth?
For the. For sales tax.
Sales tax. What this is doing is following on top of what was done last month.
Right, and so I want to see if that's within the reasonable bound.
You're talking about like the low risk, medium risk, and high risk?
Right.
Oh, I see, it's, it was 37.6 was the low risk, and then it was 37.6 to 39.4, I think, for medium risk, and then higher risk was 39.4 again.
Okay, so taking how much was done in the April adjustment and this adjustment combined?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Where does that put us?
It puts us about 50,000 less than the low risk.
Okay, so it's still, so your projected, this is just for sales tax?
I understand your question now, yes.
Yeah, so just for sales tax, your recommendation of adding 1.5 million to the estimated sales tax growth still puts us within the low risk category for the sales tax, okay?
I can't remember if it's 50,000 or right at, but somewhere like that, yes.
Okay. What about the, the property tax? I know that when the budget was proposed, that it already included the estimate for the increase in population growth. So where do you estimate an additional 1.5 million in growth on top of the growth that was already figured when the budget was proposed?
I was using, that's what I'm using the past years, what does our growth actually look like? What is it actually doing? And we are currently, if I'm actually lowballing what the estimates should be, I'm doing 4% whereas we saw nearly, almost 9% growth in 2020, which again, that might be an aberration, but in past years, it was roughly between 4.5 to 4% growth, so if we continue that pattern.
In the original budget, Rudy, do you know how much we estimated the growth in property tax would be?
Dollar amount.
No, just the dollar amount or the percentage? Actually, the percentage is, I'm more interested.
I knew I should have brought my laptop with me here, but one thing we have to keep in mind too is that there's multiple pieces of that whole property tax number, okay? Because you got some stuff that is for green belt and some of it is for redemptions and so.
And this is a total, yes.
Yeah, so the total, and I, if I remember right, the total we were estimating was about 4% increase. Oh, you have it here.
So we already figured a 4% increase in the budget adoption originally?
Yes.
And do you know what that amount was?
Well, we bumped it up, we originally. So we had a, the budget for this year was roughly $54 million. And so that, that included about a 4.5% bump.
So we figured a 4.5% increase in property tax growth year-over-year from 2020 to 2021 already in the budget?
Correct.
Okay. So where are we getting the additional 1.5 million in estimation?
From this current growth.
But we already figured current growth in the original budget?
Yes, and, and so I was saying that we had, under the current growth, it meets our expenses and our obligations as we have it here.
Right.
Illustrated here.
So can you go to the previous slide for me? One more, one more previous. Oh, okay, maybe it was the next slide. You had one that you were talking about, this one, sorry, this is the one. So it says increase projected property tax another 1.5 million. Where does that come from?
I'm not clear what you mean.
So if you're proposing that we increase the projected property tax revenue by 1.5 million, I'm wondering where that revenue is coming from? If we're just projecting it, where are we projecting that to come from? The sales tax I get, because we're trending ahead of where we would be. But on the property tax, I'm wondering where that's coming from? Because the projected growth was already figured in the original budget at, you said over 4%?
Roughly 4%.
Which is what you estimated.
I'm looking at, at 4% even, yes, yeah.
So we already, that was already figured in the original budget, so I'm wondering where the additional 1.5 million in projected revenue that you're proposing is coming from?
I think the projections were higher than needed, because I think this is closer to what we see happening.
So on sales tax, I see that, but I'm not seeing where that is on property tax. Because if you're estimating a 4% increase year-over-year on property tax, that was already figured in the original budget in the revenues.
So I'm, I'm not sure where, where it's coming at, except for this. There's a difference between projected budgeted numbers and actual numbers. And so when you do an actual number for 2020, 2020 on there, and then you look at the projected numbers, we're close, which is not, the 20, the 2020 actuals and the 2020 budgeted are so close that it doesn't even factor in a real, a real, real-time actual 4% growth.
Right.
Because it looks off when you're only less than a million dollars.
Right, well, and the reason why is because we project the next year at 4% growth. That's what I was wondering.
I know, but if you, but if you have your actuals at 20, from 2020, and then you look at your project, your, your budgeted, and they're that close, that means that you're, there's flexibility in, in your, your, your budgeted numbers. There has to be, because if the actuals turn out to be $57 million, then the, then the new growth on top of that's going to have to go on top of that, not, not on the budget. Because you're going budget to budget, but the actuals are different than the budgeted.
Yeah.
And we look at the historical, when we're looking, looking at these, we knew 2019 numbers when we were doing the budget for 2021. And towards the end of actually putting the budget, we knew those all numbers, we had some ideas and estimates of what the 2020 was, and we made those estimates based upon the prior numbers and perceived, the anticipated estimated growth on those numbers. Because the actual.
Now that, now that we're halfway, or getting close to halfway through the years, do you think your, your projected budget numbers are going to hold solid and true?
For property tax?
Yeah.
I have no indication otherwise.
For sales tax, I agree. For sales tax.
Because property tax, we don't, we don't collect anything until December.
I, I realize that, but, but when we look at the actuals that actually came in from 2020, our actuals are higher than what we projected on a budget basis for that year.
I think it was like 61. I'm trying to remember, I didn't bring that sheet with me.
Anyway.
Yeah, no.
We projected 57, we got 61.
Yeah, based upon, based upon the 2020 numbers, yeah, we should look at it, I don't have them in front of me, honestly, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I haven't seen those either.
Because we, we have never, we have never, as far as I know, over-projected, right? We usually come on a conservative basis and we under-project into a certain amount so that we don't get caught in some sort of a wild swing, but on, on property tax, on a property tax basis, it's pretty consistent. So we should be able to be a lot more consistent on that, on the, on the sales tax side, it's, it can go like whatever. We don't know.
I haven't spent any time thus far this year, start, I haven't started projections of where we are. That's something that I was waiting till about mid-year to be able to look, to start looking at that.
Right. And it'll be interesting this year, because everywhere around me, we've got tons of new growth going on. Everywhere, I, I've got, I've got rooftops everywhere where I see bare rooftops, I mean, in my own backyard, I've got four or five homes that are going up, and I see them, see them everywhere. So I would anticipate that our new growth is going to be pretty high this year.
Yeah, I don't think it's any, I mean, is it any different than last year?
Last year calmed down, well, actually, last year kind of exploded, but again, I think that's an aberration. It was between, it was about 8.9% growth in property tax roughly. And before that was roughly four to five, 4.6 million. And that's why it stuck with 4% flat for the coming year.
So with the sales tax, I definitely see, because we had, because all the economists had thought that we'd have a huge dip in sales tax, we had reduced our revenue projections for sales tax, but Utah County, thank heaven, has not seen what many areas of the nation have seen. So I definitely see that we're trending ahead, 1.3 million year-to-date. And we've already done one adjustment, this would be a second adjustment to that, I feel completely comfortable with that, because that's what the economic trends are showing. But we already figured in over a 4% growth rate on property tax year-over-year in the budget, and I'm not seeing where we can justify adding to that. And so I'm not seeing where we're coming up with an additional 1.5 million in property tax revenues, because we've already figured growth into the original budget. So there's, that, now, is there an actual budget schedule for this adjustment that I can look at?
No, I just use the hard numbers, based on the budget schedules we have, or we published. I just drew the numbers from that.
Okay. I was just wondering if I missed it, because I hadn't seen an actual budget schedule that had been published, so.
Yeah, but again, I'm, I'm looking at both with my own eyes, the growth going on and of, and based on history, yes, you, you have planned on 4% growth. And even though I'm highly concerned with 4% continued growth, I think that Utah, as we now see with Eagle Mountain, is being realized as a place to be. And so while that 4% is conservative, it likely should be closer to 6 or so beyond that. And that's what I have in mind, I did not spell out in this.
Do we have a, a risk factor on changing? Did we get an analysis on changing our estimated growth from 4% to 6%? Any indicators or risk factors on that? We haven't done that yet.
Yeah, that's because I didn't, I didn't develop anything. In my mind, I'm thinking at the rate we're growing, COVID aside, I would expect that the 8.9% growth that we had in 2020 would more likely be closer to 6 or 7, not the, what we have this COVID response.
Yeah, I could see that maybe prior to a 300% increase in material building costs, but in the last, what, four months, we've seen a 300% increase, and so I think that will probably hamper those. So, yeah.
But again, I drew that one and a half.
Right, new growth is new build, and new build is hard when we have a 300% increase in the last four months.
Exactly, and that's, that's took, took everyone by surprise, but I, but from what I see from the growth, that there has been virtually no slowing down on growth despite the costs involved. And, and so that's why I believe that we can have that one and a half million dollars coming out of projected county property tax, as well as a sales tax, optional sales tax.
We actually budgeted a 5.3% increase from the 2020 budget coming into 2021.
For the property tax revenues? Okay, so it sounds.
Of course, that was budgeted 2020 was our baseline, so that was a full number.
Budgeted 2020, and then we estimated an additional revenue of 5.
5.4 million, 5.4%.
5.4%. So we're already above the 4% that you assumed.
And the rate we're growing just in sales, we're ahead of ourselves by a million and a third.
Right, and so for sales, I feel completely comfortable with a projected optional sales tax increase of 1.5 million. But I'm not seeing any indicator that we should go above. I was thinking 4%. If we did 5.4%, we're already almost 1.5% above what you estimated, and I'm not seeing where we can come up with anything beyond a projected property tax revenue of an increase 1.5 million on top of an already 5.4% increase, particularly with building costs, material costs having gone up 300%. I think that's going to slow down our build. I don't, I don't personally feel comfortable assuming greater than 5.4% growth year-over-year, which is already figured into the budget, unless I see some strong indicators, otherwise.
Well, again, that's, that's, the property, excuse me, the material costs have, has been a big surprise. But again, the construction projects, there are exceptions, but for all intents and purposes, that has not been cut back. And again, we see that in industries as well as personal homes.
Yeah.
So that's why I feel comfortable with the fact that we have that one and a half million dollars in, in property tax.
So can I ask you a few questions? On, on, I'm going to go kind of backwards from the proposal. Move 8 million dollars from the general fund to the capital improvement plan?
Mm-hmm.
And where, where's that money? Where's, where's the movement of that money for 8 million dollars?
The general fund?
Yeah, you're just going to move.
Just move it to capital improvement so we have the capital, so we can use those funds for other capital needs.
Okay.
It's, it's a separate savings account for.
So I guess my, my, I'm trying to, so the capital improvements, with the last, the last proposal we did, we fully funded that?
Mm-hmm.
So I'm not sure what this 8 million dollars is in for the capital improvements.
The. The reason why is that the capital improvements can be, is we can have more allowances to use it than if we just kept it in general fund. So what you're saying is I contradicted the move that you made last month, is what you're saying?
No, I was, I'm just trying to understand, because we, we fully funded the capital improvement plan for-
For three, three or four years?
Till 2024, I think, 2023? Yeah.
For three years, so 2021, 2022, 2023, okay. That makes sense, 2023.
So with that being, you know, fully funded on, on that, I, I just, I just want to understand where the, the general, the general fund money, moving that to cap, I'm just, why? I mean, why would we, why would we move that?
Because for me, at least, as I've come to understand, the capital improvements allow us to use, has a greater latitude to use those funds for very, wide range of projects. And that's why I was going to move the 8 million to there, rather than keep it in general fund.
Okay. I mean, my understanding of the general fund has the most flexibility. Capital improvements, we usually move it there, it's almost-
Use on capital projects.
On, on projects, and then, of course, it can float back and forth. We can move the capital improvements projects money back into the general fund if needed, or we can say we're not going to do capital improvements for this year, for whatever reason, and move that money back into general fund to kind of keep, you know, things floating back and forth. That's how I've always seen the general fund and capital improvements. And so when I saw that, I thought, hm, I'm not sure what that 8 million for, from the general fund for, for the capital improvements was.
Again, we're anticipating some expansion projects, various kinds, and that's why I was thinking that it would be best to move it into capital improvement.
You know, I, I think if we're going to move the money, I think you're right, there's some projects coming up. In fact, we, I asked for an analysis on the capital projects committee, I don't see Richard Nielsen in here, but he helped with that, and Rudy helped with that as well. I, if we're going to put more money into the capital projects, I would love it to be for a project. Just like you say, we funded three years of the capital improvements plan. I would love to see that money moved with a project in mind. So if we say, for example, I think we need like 600,000 for the CJC, and it would be like, I want to move this 600,000 for the CJC, and then let's start that project. And we, and I think we have an analysis for that. So I, my preference would be if we're going to move the money into the capital projects fund, that we move it with a project, and we approve that project at that time, so that Richard Nielsen can get started working on that.
And I would, I would, I mean, we, we're not talking about ARPA money or CARES money, I know, we're trying, we're trying to, but the ARPA money can, and in some cases, if we go through an analysis with it, it might be able to use for some of our capital project that, that we have, which, which then we could take that money out of the capital projects and bring it back into the general fund.
Right.
Or we could extend the capital projects funding mechanism for longer.
Right. Or we can move some of the projects that are later on the list, up on the list, too.
And so for me, in looking at that, if we're looking at capital, capital improvement projects and, and funding for that, I would, I would probably prefer that we wait on that to see how this, this other money is going to settle. So if it settles in a positive way for us, and it can be used for some of those, then we can, then we can maneuver from there.
Yeah, you had mentioned the CJC, the Children's Justice Center up in American Fork. I didn't put anything specific in mind, because I have that in mind, but we also have Public Works that may be moving closer to the, the jail system also. There is dialogue that's not anything formal, there's informal dialogue going about that possibly, so I did not specify why that amount to the capital improvement, perhaps I should have.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would like something that's more, more outlined, you know, like-
So if I could, if I could then go back to, for understanding purposes for me, increase the projected county property tax by 100, 1.5 million dollars. And, and I'm assuming that that, that increase is our, is, is our projected budgeted numbers, right?
Mm-hmm.
So that's 1.5. Then we increase the, the projected county option sales tax, another 1.5, which is interesting, because I went, I went down through and did an analysis on, and it's a simple analysis on, on sales tax projections. And yeah, there's, it, it's kind of interesting to see what's, what's happening. You know, we have our, our low risk at 37.6, our moderate risk 37.6 to 39, we already talked about that. But on our local options, on the local option side, which is a smaller version of it, but then the county options side, from 2020 to 2021, currently, you know, we're, we're at 18%. That's pretty dang high. Now, I don't know exactly how that translates through the year, because we're not, you know, if, if we're just looking at a year-to-date on that, but if I look at the charts, you know, on our local options and our options, it almost seems to grow, you know, through the, through the years. So that would be a fascinating thing to, to analyze and to watch, if it does continue on that growth pattern, or if we start to hit an inflationary measure, we could have a dip in there. All those factors are kind of an interesting one to see where we're at.
I think it is kind of an un-
But it's pretty healthy.
Right, it's very healthy.
It's a very, very healthy one that's going on there, and if you add those-
I do worry that it's a little unstable, too, though, like you said, with inflationary measures.
Don't know.
I mean, we're starting to see with fuel and building costs, raw costs, food costs are going up, so I think that one becomes a little more unstable.
So I, so I see that, I see that one, and then I see the cut of $3 million from general, general fund property tax. With the, when, when I ran these numbers through our, you know, that 10-year model, it, it was, they were, they were washes, right? They just kind of washed, because you're, we, we increased the property tax and we decreased it by, you know, $3 million, but we offset it with a, with a 1.5. And so it washed through, it didn't change any of the numbers on the bottom, because of the, of, of the wash through with it. And so, you know, for me, when I, when I look at this, I, I always try to go back to, right here and right now, this is not the meeting that we're cutting or doing anything when it comes to tax, the tax rate. I keep saying that, because I get my, I catch myself and I hear others say it all the time. When we say we're reducing tax, that, you know, we're talking about rates, 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 not tax, we're talking about, about the rates. And so we're, that, that meeting will come up in June. That's going to be our June meeting in which we actually set rates. Right now, we're looking at, looking at budgets and trying to analyze and see where, where we're at, and, and what you're proposing for the first three. I, I don't have any problem with that necessarily, by just the numbers adjusting back and forth, but there will have to be an analysis, in my opinion, in two ways, when we actually set that rate. If we set that rate, we're going to have to look at those and say, where, how we just, how, what's the justification for this? Because that rate's going to come into play on, on where it at, where it's at. I feel very confident with the 4.8 million dollars we did in April. The three, the $3 million may be able to get there. I don't mind putting, I, I, again, I wouldn't mind, you know, going with you, Commissioner Sakovich, on the first three, on your proposals for this, and saying, those are numbers that we're plugging in, but there's a couple of things that I would like to, I would like to see with that, and that's, that's an understanding that when we actually do the tax rate discussion, that we flush all these out, and that we've done the analysis and the projections all the way through, and we run it through the models as best as possible, so that we can kind of see where we're at, so that we don't have, you know, an up and down. And, and if we need to adjust, you know, one way or the other, we have the flexibility to do it. And second, there's, there's two sides for me always to this, the, the expense side and, and, and the revenue side. And on, on the, on the expense side, I would, I would like to have some sort of understanding that if we're going to be going at these, at, at, at kind of this level, that we, we're probably needing to say on a general fund basis, that we're freezing all future hiring, and we're not going to be doing a future hire on general fund. I'm not talking about ANC, but I'm talking about general fund, where we say, we're going to be freezing that until we see where we're at in the models, because that's, that's one way that we can control it on a management basis.
I agree.
And if we, and if we do that, now on the ANC, and I, and I, and I see our recorder back here, you know, I, we've, we've had that discussion, we've had a little bit of discussion, we'll probably have a lot more, you know, I, I, I'll tell her right now, I'm, I'm supportive of the, of the eight, you know, eight new additions to that, to get back into compliance and kind of do a stepping process. So if we, I think there were teams of eight, if I remember correctly, but that doesn't hit our general fund, this, it's different, a little bit different, but if we can-
It's a separate funding source.
It's a separate funding source. But if we can agree that there's a, there's a management side here that we have to hold the line to, I think that's where, and I'm not trying to put any words into your mouth, but that's where we can say, okay, we can reach out there, but if we have to reach out there, we have to manage out there.
Yeah, and what you're talking about is looking at basically cutting our expenses, our, our expected expenses.
Right.
I agree, I have, I don't see any expenses cut in here. And I think when it comes to hiring freezes, that is one way to, that is absolutely one way to cut expenses, which, like I said, I don't see any actual expenses being cut in this proposal. But one of the things to keep in mind is, we're on the verge of possibly one of the worst fire seasons in history, and the sheriff's department and the fire comes out of the general fund. So does that mean we're not going to hire any more firefighters if we have a fire?
No, no, you know, we have-
Does that mean we're not going to hire any more sheriff's deputies? Because they're 50% of the general fund, and if we're, if we're freezing all general fund hires, that means no more sheriff's deputies, no more police, no more fire. And I, I don't feel like I can make that determination right on the front end of what could potentially be one of the worst fire seasons in, in our history.
Right, and that's, again, that's a management tool that we have to look at, because we are going to be, and we all know it, that we all know the fires could be horrendous. And, but I don't know why, again, on the management side, we would never go out there for a, even a, even a catastrophic fire and, and load up with, you know, 50 more personnel on a long-term basis.
For sure, yes, absolutely.
So there's got to be some consideration for emergency basis, and I totally get that.
Right.
And I think that we have, we even have funds on an emergency basis that we can tap into.
And are we looking at positions that are currently in the staffing plan that are-
Oh, no, no, no.
Open and funded?
Right.
I just want, I want specific.
It's a good clarification.
Yeah, yeah.
So staffing, it's not, it's not a total, from my opinion, it's not a total freeze. If it's already in the staffing plan-
Okay.
You can be hired to the staffing plan.
Okay.
It's, it's just in addition to.
You're, you're talking about adding to the staffing plan?
I'm talking about adding to the staffing plan.
Okay.
Not that, if it's in the staffing plan, and that position becomes vacant, you, you still, you still hire on, on that staffing.
Okay.
Yes, and so it'd be a surgical approach in this freezing of the hiring freeze. And for fires, a vast majority of that comes from federal grants that fund these fires. And that's why we had them here, what, last week, week before, to outline what, what they're ready to, to do and what they, who, get acquainted with them, but fires is, we have an enormous amount of federal grants for that. In the city, that different thing, yes, of course. County-specific, yes, of course, but this comprehends using our, I did not bring it up, but it does use the tool of freezing hires surgically. So we don't freeze recorders, we don't freeze assessors, we don't freeze critical positions.
Yeah, on an emergency basis.
Yes.
So again, and for me, these are, these are numbers that we put in as we're looking at budget, budgetary fashions, the harder discussion will, will come in June when we actually set that rate. That, that is, that is the date, and that's the time in which that's set, because it's not one that you can set today, change tomorrow.
Right.
Set the next week, change again.
You know, I would love to have these discussions between now and then, and then kind of decide what we're going to do between now and then, and then, and then have an open dialogue and a discussion, and look at all of these options between now and that time when we set the rate, and then make a budget adjustment at that time.
Just, just as, just as I see it. Right. Oh, I see what you're saying. Instead of, instead of doing a budget, a budget adjustment now.
A one that, a one that has a budget schedule.
We have to open it up again. I mean, the one, the one thing that we have not done, and that is, you know, we haven't alerted any of the departments, which, you know, on their, on their budgets, that there's any kind of decrease, right? That takes a seven-day notice or something of that nature.
Right, and there isn't, and I haven't seen a budget schedule either.
And this, and this, this approach did not even think about-
Right.
-freezing hires.
Right.
In this approach.
That doesn't, that's not necessarily a, you know, open it up for a, a, you know, we can do that without-
Right.
-going through that other process.
Right, I agree.
And, and because we take that, because that's been taken off the table, you know, we're not going back to the departments and saying, like the state did, I think the state said, hey, everyone's going to cut 10%. I think that's what they did. Because that's been taken off the table, the, that big chunk of our budget is off the table. It's, it's, it's now we're down to the smaller stuff, and we have stuff in there that's been allocated, and I think that's why we see these, these budget adjustments. And again, Commissioner, I, I, I can support this, you know, on, on a numbers basis, but I, we, we are going to have to look at everything going forward, and, and especially coming into that June, and I'm, I'm with you, Amelia, on that we have to have full analysis all the way through on how it's going to work on a, you know, on a year-to-date basis, and I, and, and into the future. Even, and I, and, and to Josh, you know, we talked about fully burdening, and, and we, we had some conversations on that, we'll probably bring that up in a, I haven't had a chance to talk with you, this is kind of new, but, you know, fully burdening what that looks like when it comes to our fees, and that's, from the commission's side, that's a yes. We need to have that conversation in our next department head meeting, so that we can, we can walk down through it. But that's another area in which if we see a fully burden, a fully burden on there, it can help offset some of the general fund, so.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm also thinking, and this was not part of today's discussion, but all the grant money, are we fully burdening the grants that come in with administrative fees?
That's part, that's part of the, the whole process.
Commissioner Lee, yes. Could we take a five-minute personal-
Absolutely. You bet. Let's, let's, let's take a five-minute, five-minute break.
Yeah.
Let's, we'll do that. Yep. Okay, you bet, you bet. No problem. No problem.
You're assuming a 4% growth rate, but the difference between 34.8 million and 38.6 million is 11%. So I'm wondering where that trend in growth went up by 11%?
The, are you looking to sales or the property tax?
Under property tax.
And the 38 to over the 34?
And same with, let me double, do them. The 30s?
34.
32 to the 36 as well.
That by 38. 642. Yeah, I came up with just, just under 9%.
Okay.
In my notes, I wrote 8.9%.
Plus the difference, well, actually on sales tax as well, the difference between 2019 and 2020. A 4% increase would have been 33.514, not 36.469. And so if we're assuming the increase minus, yeah, we're looking at significantly more than a 4% increase year over year there assumed. Almost double that.
Yeah, I used the previous, I used 2000. Yeah, what I did was for 2019, I used that growth against 2018. And then I extended that amount to 2020. As the facts are, as I have on the rounded numbers.
Right, and the difference between 2018 and 2019 is nowhere near 9% or 11%.
You have 29.
Right.
714. Divided by 32, 225. Yeah, I got just under 8%.
Right, so I'm wondering where the, the growth factor, the assumed growth factor came at that high of a rate?
I'm not sure if I'm following you. I, what I saw was a 9%, 6.5%, 7, almost 8%, and then 11.5% in 2020. And so what I did is I just lowballed it to 4% overall to project from what 21 would look like. So the 37.9828 represents about a 4% growth from 2020's sales.
On the property tax?
I'm sorry, I'm talking sales. On the property tax would be the same process.
So the 4%, is that, is that an additional 4% on top of the 5.3% that we already figured in the budget?
No, I, I lowballed it. I went under the 5. I, I just simply said 4%.
All right, I still, maybe I, I just don't, I don't understand where the additional 1.5 million in revenue from property tax came from. Just looking at the numbers in here, knowing what we projected for 2021, and then seeing an additional 1.5 million, I'm not, I'm not coming to that.
I was pulling that from the budget sheets in the past years. I was looking at the gross totals. And I, I just, that's what I used it from.
Okay, Chris, did you?
Only if the chair recognizes me.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm just trying to follow this. And, and I can see sales tax because you got numbers on that, but on the property tax, because there was that increase, you now have to make an estimate and plug a number in. And what I'm looking at is in 2018 to 2019, I can see that, that the 2020 plug number, the difference between 19 and 20 is 11%.
Between 19 and 20, you see 11%?
Yeah, if you divide 38.642, and you divide that by the 38.818.
Sound like we got a visitor.
You might want to mute.
We get hackers.
Can you mute all?
If you're not racist, you're a faggot, so get out if you're not.
Hacker in there.
Yeah, we get hacked. This is like, I don't know, third or fourth time this has happened.
Because it's a public and open meeting.
Anyway, Tom, if, if you divide 38.642 by 34.818, it's approximately 11%.
This is better than.
I did want, I did want some background music, but that was not it.
Chris, what I, what I, what I was doing.
Are you from Smith County?
I was using the previous year, dividing the previous year by the latest year.
Yeah, and, and if you're trying to trend it, yeah, you ended up with a plateau there that jumped to 11% instead of, I think, what you're looking for.
I, um.
Anyway, I, I think you just need to consider that as you're looking at the numbers, that there is this 11% increase. And then you trended at 4% to make the 2021 value. So you, you just may want to look at that number before you, just want to point that out.
Yeah.
And I always take the lower number and divide it by the bigger number, larger number.
Yeah. That's, in, in this case, you want to do, yeah, the larger number has to be divided by the lower number to get your percent increase. Yes.
So it's better than what I'm projecting here is what you're telling me? Remember, I said I was rounding this out and it is not exact on purpose.
I'm okay with you rounding, and I'm not saying you did a good job or a bad job. I'm just saying you got 11% in there.
So it's not 9%, it's 11%, okay. So basically, on that, on these rough numbers now, 11%, whatever that should be, Chris. That's where I believe that the, we can increase the projected property tax. I know 2008 can happen again. I worry about the free flow of federal dollars. That's going to be, that's a significant issue.
Yeah.
And what will happen is, I anticipate we will freeze all capital projects. I'm anticipating that we would move most of that, if not all of it, into general funds so we can offset the needs that we have. I anticipate that we will do that with other revenues that we have, that we have some latitude with. And so that's what we would do during that period of time. And that time, how long would that be, Rudy? Three, five years? Sometimes longer. There are times, I didn't really want to get into that, but that is something in the back of my mind. This is something we're looking at. And so if we can free up the tax dollars to the individuals, even though our piece is only less than 7% of that whole pie, it allows someone else to have that few dollars to use for something else, to help this economy weather it as well as it can. And so that's why, even though I see a 2008 around the corner, that might be this year, next year, perhaps a year later, I don't know. We have revenues enough to carry what we need to do temporarily while freezing all other operations if it came to it.
Can I make a suggestion maybe on, you know, for, to move this meeting along a little bit, because we got a lot of other things that are coming up? What if with some of the, the numbers and maybe the, the input that you've had from the commissioners now, if, and I hate to say this, but if we were to continue this for one week, and, and kind of go through the numbers again, so it's a little bit easier to understand, maybe get it on a budget schedule with Rudy, that, that budget schedule would, would allow, it would allow me to be able to go across and see kind of the reactions? Would, would that, would that be all right to do that? I mean, I'm all in favor of trying to find, as you're well aware, you know, what we can do. And I think it'd just be easier to understand if we could, if we could maybe continue that for a week.
I could even put in there a projected total collapse of the economy and what we would do with the funds that exist for, and how would we react to that as well? As a separate tab. That might be a little further than we want to go on this one, but looking at the immediate.
Yeah. Is that, is that workable?
A week should do it. I think we can do that.
Okay.
I understand that Monday's a holiday, so it takes one more workday out of the equation here that.
Well, and at this point, I mean, the budget schedule that we had last week was wildly different than this. This, this one, we don't even have a budget schedule for. I'm kind of not a fan of, I'm not a fan of changing our budget by the seat of our pants. Typically, the max I've ever seen is three budget changes in a row. This is the second one we've proposed this year already. I just think, I'm not opposed to changing the budget, I just think we need a different process. I don't even, at this point, I don't even think that just continuing it for a week or two, like, if we want to do this, let's do it in a collaborative way. Let's bring the other elected officials to the table, let's look at this. And I'm not opposed to doing it, I just don't know why we need to continue putting these arbitrary deadlines on it.
I'm going to push back just a little bit on there. If we bring the, if we bring the other, you know, departments to, to the table to talk about it, are we going to put on the table to talk about their budgets too? Because right now, that's been taken off the table for the most part. And if we're going to bring them to the table to talk about it, and make, you know, that's, that's a whole different conversation. And, I mean, there's a couple of ways that this could be done. If we go through a budgeting process now, and, and try to, the hard work of seeing how it works and massaging it back and forth, then when we get to the, the June meeting, it's easier. It becomes a lot easier because we've already had these discussions. The hard way, in my opinion, would be to go to the June meeting and say, okay, we're just going to go with this, with this kind of tax rate cut, and then afterwards, fill in the blanks and, and on a budgetary basis. I think that's the hard way.
I think both of those are bad. I, I say, let's put this on work session items for the next several weeks. Let's bring in some economists, let's look at growth rates, like, are we going to start seeing a slowing growth rates? Like, I would love for us to do this process. I'm not opposed to the process, but I would love, let's put this on the work session for the next three weeks in a row. And let's discuss this in work session. We can find out maybe from the Housing Authority what they're seeing in housing trends. Are we seeing a growth in housing? Maybe we can ask the State Tax Commission to come and give us what their estimates are, if we're going to be looking at these estimates. I like where we're going with this. I just think the process needs to be a little more deliberative. So rather than just continuing it for a week or even two weeks, I say, my, there's, there's parts of this that I don't see, I don't even see a budget schedule. I would feel comfortable just letting this one go to the wayside, and let's start putting this on the work session, and let's work through these issues and, and say, okay, let's come to an agreement on sales tax. Okay, we're going to throw that on a budget schedule. And then let's start talking about property tax, and let's look at that, and then build a budget schedule that we've collaboratively gone through, and then we vote on it.
Yeah, I'm more, I'm more, I can get that tool and work that over the next seven days. That won't be difficult. And do what we did last month with that, and that way we can see what it looks like.
Is that I'd like input from the State Tax Commission? I'd like from the Housing Authority to look at those.
If we were to have everyone else, it would, we would not have time before we had to set the tax rate. It's less than a month away. And so my, I had 198,341 people tell me to fix this tax and roll it back as far as it can, or reset the tax. And so that's the pressure I'm feeling, and, and as well personally motivated to do this. I thought it was too high. I mentioned in December 2019 to the board. I mentioned again in June of 2020, that we always start at the very lowest end and work our way up. And what I'm trying to do is do it without firing anybody, and that's what my commitment is. And so I told department heads that I have no intentions to fire, but what can we do with what we have, given this environment? And so if I just simply use that tool that's already been used last month, and a little bit more clarity on expenses, I think we can, we can still do this without a very large assembly of insights. Because while very useful, because I hear it, and that's what, and that's one fact, that's the part I've been speaking about just now, is the possibilities that are coming. But the regular American isn't, is aware of that too. But he or she, they are working as hard as they can that to weather that whatever storm is going to be. And so what I'm trying to do is making sure that they have every dollar available to them to weather that storm. And, and, and release back to them, even if it's just 7% of that whole pie, release back to them a piece of that that they can handle. So that's why I was trying to go forward with this nominal amount of $3 million cut today. But it seems like additional justification is needed, and so that's, I'm willing to continue this a week.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not opposed, I'm not opposed to, you know, if you want to put things on a work session, and let's have, let's have that discussion. I think that's, that's great. You know, let's, we're, we're only as good as the information that we have.
Right, and the information I'm seeing right now is, I think the wind is going this way. I want to see like, where is this 11% growth? I mean, this is what I'm saying, so I don't feel comfortable.
We have the facts before us.
Well, I mean, you ran on, let's, let's find a way to cut the taxes, so put a proposal together. Let's, you do it too.
Right.
Let's, let's put a proposal together and, and, and work, work, I like the collaborative thing. It makes it hard on open and public meetings for the collaborative process with this. But let's, let's, let's do it. Let's find, find ways that, that makes sense, you know, for the county, for the citizens.
We've already found 4.8 million. I'm willing to do another 1.5 increase in sales tax because I see trends that are showing me that. I'm not seeing any.
It's interesting on the one point, I'm sorry.
I'm not seeing any, anything to justify increasing projected property tax revenue by 1.5 million. I haven't seen anything there.
So the 1.5, is there more than 1.5? On the sales tax side, you're, I mean, that you're looking at, you're okay with the 1.5, but.
There, there definitely is more than, there's a lot.
Low risk, but I'm just saying, we should do analysis on it because low risk is not necessarily what the actuals are going to be.
And keep in mind that my numbers for the property tax, if we subtract out the $19 million, is already wrong. I'm told it's 11% increase, not 9 that I was looking at. So the growth is there. Of course, that is 2020 COVID blip session, but the growth is there. It's happening. And, and the $19 million is not going to be down to zero, but if you add whatever we come up with and add that to the 38, we're already ahead of ourselves as, as it is.
Right.
So we have the revenue, we have the resources already, just on the, I, I pulled this off of the, the budgets. Each of the budget years, and that's where I got these.
Right, and I think we've made adjustments for revenue. I haven't seen a single expenditure cut proposed. I think we've looked at the revenue, we've been looking at the revenue. I'm not seeing expenditure cuts proposed at all in any area. I also am seeing that we are not putting into the capital projects at all. You talk about the fact that capital projects is funded, that's only because we have federal monies. We, as a county, have not put tax dollars into capital projects. It was at zero in 2019. The only reason there's any money in it in 2020 is because of federal government bailouts that we received. We're not putting any more money into it. One of your first slides, one of the things that you talked about is you wanted us to be able to function after we no longer have federal government money coming in. And I'm not seeing us preparing for that at all. And so it's like.
Management side?
Right, I think it's management side. I, I'm not seeing us preparing for that at all.
And I was not going to go into the management side to that level at this point. I was going to bring that up at another time. But I was just addressing that we have the pattern sphere for both sales and property tax to justify a million and a half cut, or increase, excuse me, in both of those areas, and would justify a $3 million general fund reduction.
All right, how about a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt Agenda Item Number 25.
You weren't going to continue it for?
I'm sorry.
Just making sure I.
You're right.
Okay.
That's why you're the chair, I'm not.
I'm just, I just want to.
I'll make a motion that we continue Agenda Item 25 for one week.
For one week, even with the holiday? Okay. So that's special motion. Do you second that? No, I'll, I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
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 No.
We got, so Commissioner, you're on the negative, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so Commissioner Lee and Commissioner Sakovich in the affirmative, and Commissioner Gardner in the negative on that. Okay. We're off that one. We are going to move now to the discussion on the work session, which is, it's, it's almost a continuation of what we've been talking about, about that. Discussion on considering, from the past, not the last item, creating and adopting a county economic development plan.
So I put this one on here. This is kind of going back to the agreement that we just did. And I'm just wondering if there's, if we want to consider coming up with guidance for the future. I know that I had nothing to judge this off of or, or measure it off of, just because this isn't something that we have any guidance on. And you shouldered the majority of that burden, and I think you did a, I think you did a very good job with that. But I know that you also, coming in to negotiate this, didn't really have any guidance. And I didn't know if it was something we wanted to consider, coming up with a guidelines or guidance or a starting point as we look at economic development in the future. This is a discussion I wanted to have.
Yeah, I brought that up to Bill a few times as this, next, this second one came up, that we don't have a policy because we are, as I mentioned before, we are still waking up that we're no longer an ag state, at least in this area. And so this is all new, and I-15 is the economic artery for this whole front, and it's not in Eagle Mountain, so that was another consideration. So how do we address that? And we don't have a history to rely on yet.
Also, and, I mean, we have three very distinct areas of our county, right? We've got the Cedar Valley, which is not really farming, it's not really economic developed, I mean, it's not really developed. It's almost like a rural county. We've got right here along the mountain, which is very well developed, along the I-15 corridor. And then we have the south part of our county, which is the largest agricultural producer in the state, right? And so it's kind of looking at, for example, I think if someone like the Fremont Project came to us and said, I want to put this in Orem. Like, I think my appetite would be very different to that, right? So I didn't know if we wanted, it could be a policy, it could just be kind of a, a plan, a guideline that's like, hey, if we're looking in, Orem doesn't need a lot of, doesn't need a lot of help developing existing roads. They've got those, right? But Eagle Mountain obviously doesn't have roads, and so they've got a different need. I didn't know if there was a, if we wanted to look at possibly a plan, a policy, and et cetera. I don't know, what are your thoughts on that, Commissioner?
I'm wondering, I'm wondering, because economic development is, is way bigger than just tax increment financing, right? And so if we're, if we're looking at an economic development plan for the county, for us, it's, it's an interesting one because we don't, we usually have development go into the cities. That's been kind of our, our, our push, you know, if you want to, if you want to develop in the city, if you want to put your business in the city, we, we have very few businesses that are actually in county, the county proper.
Right.
And so that would be an interesting twist to it, if we were looking at what our policy was. I would like to maybe define that a little bit, maybe we can do it in chunks. At one point in time, we had, well, multiple times, we've, we've had economic, economic development individuals that were, you know, skilled in the economic side, and it's so complicated. It's, it's one, you know, where you get all these people who are coming and they got proposals, and who do you talk to? And who, who are you going to talk to at the county level? And, and if we have one person that's that economic development individual, then they can go talk with them, which can talk with the commissioner. So, I mean, that's, that's an option. We've had that in the past. That was, that was discarded about a year or so ago, with me kind of kicking and screaming a little bit on that, because I thought that was, that was something that we needed. If we're going to have the door there, that's, and the welcome mat, then we got to have somebody that's attending it. But if we're talking about.
That's a good point. I noticed at the UAC session, that there's like, there was a, a whole track for county economic developers.
Yeah.
Like, and I was like, other counties have that?
Well, we used to. Now, if we're talking about policy, if we just kind of narrow it down, and we say, what's our tax increment finance policy? That's a whole different conversation, you know, that, that will, that we would have. And I, and I think that, you know, there are some areas where we might say, if it's, if it's retail, if we put into our policy, if it's, if it's retail that you're, you're coming and asking for tax increment financing, you know, we're a no on that. That's, 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 so they would not even come and ask, right?
Right.
If, you know, if we're talking about housing, you know, I would probably think that would probably be, I'm just guessing, but we're probably going to say we're a no on the housing side too. So if you're coming to ask for tax increment financing on that, don't come and ask the county, because we've already kind of determined that. But if we're, the problem that we run into, at least from my perception, is, is that when I look at the tax increment financing, it is so different for every single company that comes. I've never had one that is like, oh, here's, here's the model, and we, and we fit, or it didn't fit. I just haven't seen that. And so if we were to write a tax increment financing policy in place, I think that it, it would be one for us that we would have to start on a real low side, to where we would put things in there that would say, if you have any, any interest in tax increment financing, you, the company has to come directly negotiate with the county. I think that's a good thing, that the county does it. Does it create more work? Absolutely, a lot more work. That, you know, that if they want tax increment, increment financing, you know, that if you're, maybe we start with percentages that are, are quite low, or we go through a matrix in the sense of if you're doing a redevelopment and it's actually beneficial, like an RDA or a CDA, whatever the case is. I've always had my internal one was, I hope you went to the city first, and the city is the one that comes to us and says, we want to do this, because if the city doesn't, if the city says, if you don't, if it's a business going to the, to the city and always saying, hey, this is what we want, then I usually start with a maybe to a no. It's not a yes, it's not a yes tree decision-making process. But if the city comes and says, we've got this piece of property, and we do, around the county, in which they have it listed as RDAs, you know, that's something they're actively going out there, and there's no, there's no company going to it right now. They're, they're just, it's just a piece of property that's dilapidated or whatever, and not being used, and they would like to get economics. So in that case, they're putting it in place.
I think of like Micron, for example. When Micron built it to Traverse Mountains, there was nothing out there.
Yeah.
And so there were no roads, no water, no sewer, no power. They had to bring that infrastructure.
Right.
And then when they did, everything started growing up around them. And that, to me, is a good use of those dollars. Because they built the infrastructure, they are paying for that infrastructure, but the city kind of inherits it, right? And then it spurs development around it, right? So that makes sense to me. But, I think, yeah, to, to your point, I don't think it necessarily needs to be a policy, but maybe some sort of plan, I don't know.
You know, on, on, on the tax increment financing, it's important to realize that they go, you know, the 20 years, roads, roads and sewer lines and water structure, water infrastructure, all those things have a certain lifespan, and they're all, they're all different, right?
Yeah.
What does a 20-year plan look on roads? So the developer goes in and does all development for it, and pays for it, and then turns it over to the city. Well, at that point, it becomes, it becomes a depreciating liability. And, and it becomes an interesting one, because now, you know, at a certain point in time, they're going to have to put more money into that. And so if they're going for 20 years, and then they're starting to drop off, and they're staying there, and, and fully participating in the tax, then that's burdened in which they can use that money then to keep the infrastructure up.
Great point.
But if we, if we, if we extend it too far, then we wind up, you know, wondering where we're going to get the money, or the cities would, because the county doesn't do that.
I don't necessarily have a solution. I put it on the work session agenda, because I wanted, I wanted us to have this conversation, that it would be nice to kind of have some sort of parameters around this. I, you know, I felt like coming into this as a new commissioner, there's really, there is no guidance. We don't have a person at the county in charge of this like other counties do. So I just wanted us to maybe open, I don't, like I said, I don't have a solution, but I thought it was a conversation to have.
Yeah, I've talked to Commissioner Lee quite a bit about that same thing, and that there are so many variances that we have not been able to actually do a work session and hammer out an outline. So that is something I'm looking forward to doing. What I don't want to do is absorb a economic development department. I want that to be in the cities, but I'd like to have some guiding principles that governs how the county responds and how a county supports each one.
Okay.
He brought that up, though.
All right, public comment. Seeing none? Thank you, we'll move into our closed meetings.
Thank you.